All right, so we're going to call this meeting to order at 7:35. I am joined by my colleagues, Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Walner, and Mr. Studo. And as Mr. Gilberto just announced, this meeting is being recorded by the town, as well as, we believe it is being recorded by NORCAM. And we will begin with the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, so we are going to start with a quick explanation of this new platform that we're all adjusting to. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One second, Phil's telling us to hang on a second.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that we're, oh, you're recording. I want to make sure I'm able to record this too. Sorry, I just heard you guys get back in. All right.
We did see you in there, and we did know that you'd be recording as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Yes.
You are, great, okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to mute everybody just for a moment. And the Madam Chair, I've unmuted you as well. So, thank you through you, Madam Chair, to the members of the board, to those who are participating in this meeting through this virtual platform, and to the general public that may be watching via NORCAM as well. So this evening, we are testing a different meeting platform. It's called GoToMeeting, and it's something that we have been referred to in recent months as a potentially less costly to facilitate virtual meetings that actually offers us additional benefits from what Zoom offers. So no final determination has been made to make a switch. This is, in fact, an experimental meeting to see how it works for this meeting. For those who are participating through the virtual platform, if you scroll down to the bottom of your screen, you'll see very similar icons to Zoom for your microphone, to mute yourself, for your camera, to turn it on or off, for the ability to share your screen, and of course, to leave the meeting as well. There are similar functions on the upper right-hand side, both for a listing of participants to show you who's in the meeting. That's a couple of, it looks like two people standing one behind the other. Then there's the, what looks like a little quotation next to that. That is for identifying chat, and then you have some settings that you may select as well. This technology does have the ability to participate both by telephone and by computer as well. I see a number of folks are on via their computer. So the thinking is we'll try to see how this goes with the meeting this evening. The technology actually includes the ability to generate a transcript of the meeting as well, which may be helpful for the generation of the meeting minutes as well in terms of providing additional information. So that's something we're going to look at the end of product on as well. We've done some experiments, but we were actually just able to get the transcript function up and running at roughly 6:25 this evening. So we haven't had the chance to review how, what the quality looks like from a test, but we'll do so after this evening's meeting. So I'll stop it at that, Madam Chair, and I think that, you know, the meeting will probably be very similar to previous meetings. And if there's any issues, I do have the Information Technology Director on the meeting with us as well to be helpful. We'll ask him to hang around just for a little bit to make sure there's no bugs.
Thank you, Matt. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. And our next order of business are the minutes for the November 16, 2020 regular and executive session minutes. Mr. Vincenzo, you are muted.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 16, 2020 regular session minutes as written.
Mr. O'Leary, I can see that you seconded, but you're muted too.
Second.
Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez, you're muted.
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 16, 2020 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Opened by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. Next order of business is the COVID-19 update. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very brief update. I think a much more extensive update for the community presented at the Board of Health meetings that will be taking place later this week. The, I think the sort of short update is, I'm going to get some feedback. Bear with me one moment. Okay, seems like the feedback has stopped. So we expect a more extensive update at the Board of Health meeting, but, you know, we have continued to see incremental increases in case numbers here in North Reading over the past month or so, a trend that we've talked about and has continued in recent weeks. And similar activity has been occurring in public schools as well. And we're working closely through the public health nurse with the school nurses to address each instance of an identified case in the schools, be it student or faculty, and appropriate notifications are taking place. We have seen some positive amongst the town workforce, and we have been responding to and following up in contact tracing on each case as each case has come up. Municipal services remain open, although our buildings are closed to walk-in traffic by the public. And we have identified a couple of locations here in the town hall where, when necessary, we can meet with the public by appointment only. And we continue to encourage residents to visit the town website, to contact departments by telephone number, or to do email access as well, send an email to the department to conduct business. And so I think that that's sort of the short status update. I would say it's, you know, similar to where we were at in the last meeting, although the case numbers do continue to increase, much as we are seeing statewide and, in fact, across the country. There is a working group of department heads, including those from the public schools, and we reviewed this with the financial planning team as well, that is working through their spending requirements for federal funding. I think most folks are aware we have a pretty substantial deadline upcoming of December 30th for federal funding, and we're working, you know, to ensure that we are addressing all of our needs to the greatest extent possible with the understanding that we're going to need to have available funding potentially for the period after December 30th to address costs. And so we've tried to work strategically with departments in consulting with the finance director in order to sort of move funding into the appropriate buckets. And I think we have an appropriate plan in place to make the best use of those resources. My hope is to be able to have a detailed report of where we lost that deadline on the December 21st meeting. Just to show, there is quite a bit of effort underway to make sure we maximize that funding and its use as we approach the deadlines.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Do the members have any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Questions, comments, just in relation, you know, where we are today, not just as a town, but as a nation and as a state. I mean, 173,500 new cases today nationwide. On average, 196,800 per day for the last two weeks since our last meeting. It's up 15%. We're at almost 15 million people have been infected with this, which was at 11 million just two weeks ago. 283,000 deaths. And I'm just reiterating these numbers to drive home to anybody who's listening here that, you know, this is real, this is happening, this is upon us. You know, in Massachusetts, we've got over 250,000 cases and 10,800 deaths, you know, to date, as of today. 58,500 active cases in Massachusetts that are being monitored. Now, hospitalizations, over 1,500 hospitalizations as of today. Again, seven-day average is 5.5%. If you take out the testing that they do on the college kids, we're actually at 7.4%. You know, I mean, before, was it 0.8%? I mean, this thing is really upon us, and Thanksgiving hasn't even hit yet. You know, so it's real. And here in North Reading, again, I spoke with the health director today. I mean, they're monitoring between 70 and 80 cases just here in our community right now, was as high as 95 a couple of weeks ago. You know, so it's here, you know, and we have to be careful, we have to be cognizant, and we have to all do our part. You know, for those of us among us who are in denial, please stop. Think about others, don't think about yourself, don't be concerned about civil liberties and all the rest. This is to protect ourselves. And fortunately, you know, vaccines are on the way, that's a good thing. But it's months and months away before you and I are going to be able to get vaccinated because, you know, the healthcare workers are going to be first, the seniors are going to be second, and then nursing homes and assisted living facilities, as it should be, because they're the most vulnerable. So it's months away, so we still have a lot of work to do ourselves in order to make the small sacrifices. And again, I don't know, I hope everybody's Thanksgiving holiday was good. Mine was wonderful, but very different and much smaller. You know, my gathering, my family gathering was minuscule compared to what it used to be. But it's a small sacrifice to make to make sure that next year we can all get together. I just implore everybody to, you know, get over the, you know, this isn't real and it's a fast, because it's not. And so we all need to make these small sacrifices for the next several months till everybody can get the vaccinations and things start getting back to normal. So part of my report on the Board of Health is, you know, they're doing a good job of monitoring and collaborating with all our town departments and with regional, on a regional basis, with other health departments to find out what's going on in other communities. And it's critical, you know, that we have this level of communication. And I've been assured from the health agent that, you know, they don't anticipate any local changes, you know, to regulations here locally in North Reading, you know, unless it's in concert with regional and statewide collaborations. So we can be sure that, you know, the local Board of Health isn't just going to go off by their own and say, you know, 10 people on CVS or whatever it's going to be, you know, unless it's in collaboration with the state and some coordinated effort on a regional basis. But it's really important that we do take this seriously, take the responsibility. If you're not going to take it for yourself, take it for others. You know, wear your mask, follow the protocols, do as you're asked. In the next several months, hopefully, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. But again, I applaud everybody's efforts here locally, nationally, for what they're trying to do to get it done. It's just some knuckleheads that are hurting everybody. So hopefully, the message gets through, hopefully, people hear it. And again, as weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks pass, you know, we have to speak locally, act locally, and hopefully, it filters on up. If it's not coming from the top, let's get it from the bottom up. So let's do our part here in North Reading, and I think we're doing a pretty good job here to help coordinate and, again, spread the message statewide and nationally. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have any questions for Mr. Gilberto?
I do not.
Mr. Walner, do you have any questions for Mr. Gilberto? Or comments? Mr. Studo? No, all right. I'm going to just reiterate, not as sly as Mr. O'Leary did because he covered all the bases, but just to thank the town, the town administrator, the school, the school administrator as a superintendent, keeping us in the loop regularly, updating us about what is going on and not throwing alarm on it, but just, you know, giving us the most updated information as what's transpiring and where, because we appreciate that information. All right, next order of business is public comment. If anybody would like to, there's a function at the top that's a chat function. It's a little bit different than the Zoom meeting. But if anyone that's attending would like to comment? I don't see any chat, Mr. Gilberto, do you?
I do not either.
Okay, all right, so I think we can move on to, they don't have a raised hand on this.
My screen does not show a raised hand on the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little different. All right, so we all move on to the next, which is board member reports. We'll kick it off with you, Mr. O'Leary. I know you kind of gave a little bit of a report from Board of Health, but.
I did give a little report from the Board of Health, and again, they have it in another meeting Wednesday evening. So I'm sure the town administrator, and I will give you an update at the next meeting. And again, just as far as water, wastewater sewer, we're going to have a comprehensive update this evening for the board and for the community in relation to what's going on as far as the water projects that are forthcoming. Of course, about water rate, hearing a lot of that will be covered also. And then as far as wastewater, again, an update will be given by our consultants this evening. And I just want to acknowledge people who will be presenting to the board tonight, people from Wright Pierce, Rob Williamson, Mike Stein, and Colin Stewart, who are working very hard for months and months, well, now years, and some of them, for water and wastewater. So the update will be enlightening for a lot of people here. But again, I'd also like to acknowledge, you know, Mark Clark, our water superintendent, who's been putting a significant amount of effort. John Tefella, town engineer, Chris Deming, our acting EPW director, town administrator, of course, working hard, and Mr. Studo for working very diligently and hard to come up to speed on everything that we're talking about. So he's been putting a lot of effort into coming up to speed. So the board is going to be well informed after this evening, and I won't have to give any more reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting the board member reports, but something very important for those who may be participating by telephone. If you do wish to speak and you're on mute, if you press star six, you can unmute yourself. And if you press it again, you can also mute yourself. So somebody is looking to be recognized and they're on the telephone, press star six and say, Madam Chair.
Do you mean for the public hearing coming up or for public comment?
For public comment or at any point when the public is being recognized, yes.
Okay, so why don't we go back to, hold the thought on the board member reports. Why don't we go back and just double-check to see if any of the attendees want to speak at public comment? If you could press star six, you said, on the phone?
Correct.
We have not proceeded to the public hearing yet, that's coming up next. So if you're here to speak on the public hearing, we haven't started that public hearing, but if you're here to speak for public comment, please feel free. No?
I'm not seeing or hearing any.
All right, so we moved on from the public comment portion to general public comment. We just heard Mr. O'Leary's report. And let's go to Mr. Walner. Do you have any reports, Mr. Walner?
Yes.
I can't hear feedback, excuse me, Mr. Walner. Is there a way for you to mute, Mr. Gilberto? Because I've been hearing a lot of feedback, and I don't know what that's coming from.
Madam Chair, I did just talk with the IT director, and it may be a function of feedback from a volume on audio speakers. So if folks could just, you know, if anyone's got their volume up kind of high, if they could lower it just a little bit, and then I will also mute.
Okay, all right, it's gone now, so. All right, Mr. Walner?
Yeah.
Any reports?
Yes, two things. One is I've been reporting every session about what's going on with the age-friendly initiative. This is the effort to better assess what's going on with a growing demographic in our town by working with our consultants, UMass Gerontology. They've completed the survey results of 1,300 residents that responded. They have completed the focus groups. We did four different focus groups. Stakeholders, key informants, rising seniors, seniors, and we did a fifth of everybody who couldn't make the other four. So we've completed that. We are now moving on to doing peer comparisons to other communities in the state on two fronts. One front is to look at our efforts to create an intergenerational community center, which would be comprised of Parks and Rec Senior Center, youth services, and veteran services compared to other communities that have already gone down the pipe to get a comparison about what we might be expecting if we get on that, down that way, and how we can be better prepared to do that. And then the second thrust is to become an age-friendly community. You really need someone very similar to like a Jen Ford who does this for youth services. You need someone who's focused on driving an age-friendly initiative. Consider an age-friendly director if you want, that would drive our town towards an age-friendly. And so we're also looking at peer communities where they've created those kind of positions, and so we can get a feel for what that might look like in our own town. So making very fast progress. We're hoping to have finalized reports by around May-June is the plan, and look forward to sharing that all. And I look forward to seeing the report myself because I haven't been able to be involved with seeing the data. Just part of the way it goes. Catherine McKay, Jen Ford, and myself have been actively involved in leading this. Kim Manzelli had to step away for personal family reasons. We miss her, but we're at a good point to do this on our own, so we're feeling good about that. The second thing is, you know, the town allows CPC to come up with money to work with Abacus, which is a consultant, to look at the old stop and shop area where Ocean Lot is now. We call it the Winter Street, Main Street project. CPC had a meeting last week, I attended that with Abacus. They have come up with concept drawings about what that may look like. It's concept drawings based on us being able to do a package treatment plant there now and potentially hook up with the sewage later on, you know, eight, nine, 10 years later. But it's allowing us to do drawings, it's a mixed-use concept of, you know, townhouses, apartments, things of that nature, plus retail and open space, plus potentially the intergenerational community center being in the middle of it. So we have the drawings, and we're right now doing a reality check with some developers to find out if we're on the right path, or we start to take it to the next level. So that's making good progress. Those are the two things that I have on my plate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Studo, board member reports?
Yes, I will piggyback on some info on the CPC that there is an interim appointment that the CPC is discussing to have a formal vote on on December 15th. And then at that point, there will be a notice sent out on the transcript due to a resignation of one of the members. So that's kind of just an FYI, and there was a memo as well that I could read if you want, but it just pretty much covers the same thing. And the bigger update is I'd like to make a brief statement just to kind of give a summary of what's going on with the 20 Elm Street 40B application of Mr. Yaba and New York Ventures for their project. And again, this is more just to give, it is, it's a summary of everything that's gone on, and there's been, it's one of those situations where there's been a lot that's happened and a lot that, and then really, nothing has happened. So I'll just give that brief summary because I know that we've had a lot of questions from a lot of people, you know, many members of the community. So the 1.5% appeal is still before the Housing Appeals Committee. Ordinarily, the parties would have filed their testimony, and a hearing would have taken place by now on the issue of whether the town meets the 1.5 land area minimum. However, during the past year, the applicant was filed a number of motions aimed at getting confidential information on group home locations into evidence. These efforts, which includes subpoenas to state agencies for documents and discovery requests of the board, have delayed the proceedings. The parties are currently in another round of briefing on the issue of whether evidence on the location of group homes can be introduced. By law, this information cannot be disclosed without a court order. In addition, group home acreage provided by DHCD, supposed to be relied upon by all parties in the HAC. The board has made both of these arguments in response to the applicant's many motions. The presiding officer will rule on these round of motions sometime after December 8th. After that ruling, the parties will file their testimony in a hearing scheduled. At this point, it is hard to predict when that hearing might be as it depends on when the presiding officer rules on the motions. So that's just kind of the matter of facts of what's going on, and it just, it's going to be a little bit longer before we have clarity on the next step. And Madam Chair, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Studo. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I have nothing to report right now, just a comment that I am liaison to the Veterans Committee, and I would like to acknowledge that it is Pearl Harbor Day, and just make an acknowledgement of that, that's all.
Thank you. I just want to say a huge thank you to Representative Jones and Mrs. Jones, and Senator Tar, the team at the Senior Center, Mary and Sherry, for the magnificent job that was done to my fellow colleagues who showed up to help pick up and pass out. Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo, and I were all there to help whatever way we could. And I just want to say thank you for that effort. That was amazing, not only for the people that organized it and set it up. Over 200, over 200 bags were, Thanksgiving bags were provided, and then a whole car, a whole truck of donations from the seniors that came by donating their, donating food to the food pantry. So they gave something, they got something, but that was just something totally different. The seniors look forward to this every year, and so do we. We always get invited, and we all, you know, it's a great day, so it was wonderful to be able to redo this in this way during COVID-19. And I also want to make mention while we're on board member reports that we do have a number of boards and commissions and committees that have vacancies, and we're in the process of filling expired terms or reappointments. So if you are interested, there's certain citizen activity forms that we keep on record for a while, but if you're either new to the town or new to volunteering, like we all do, please fill out a citizen activity form and list any board, commission, or committee that you're interested in serving on. There are many open, there are many open positions on different commissions and committees. So please put your citizen activity form in. It's a labor of love, we're all volunteers, but we're all mission-oriented to making our town a better place, as you can see and hear from all of the things that you just heard from board member reports. So that's kind of a press release to any attendees that aren't already serving, because I can see most of you are. But, Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I just.
I was going to go back to you.
Sorry, just because you brought it up. I actually, I got a few phone calls from people asking why I wasn't at the senior event and why I wasn't doing, I just never got an invite, so I think it was just oversight. I was surprised as anybody when I saw you all in the paper. So I apologize for not being there. I just wasn't, didn't get an invite, I'm sure it was just an oversight, but it wasn't intentional.
Well, I don't think any soul is going to question your commitment to seeing there was all the town, Mr. Walner. So if we could all be at everything, that would be wonderful, but we haven't been able to figure out how to bilocate yet, so, you know, it's okay. Don't worry about it. But just a shout out to Representative Jones, Mrs. Jones, and everybody that was there to make that happen, all the seniors and people that brought seniors there to pick up their bag, it was amazing, it was a great afternoon. All right, I don't miss Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, again, part of the day, again, congratulations to Linda and Brad Jones and Senator Taft for being able to, first of all, being so creative. Again, continuing the tradition and trying to meet some needs and gather the community together. They did a fantastic job. But again, I also had the privilege and the pleasure of. But again, I also had the privilege and the pleasure of dropping some stuff off. You know, for people who weren't able to get out, they had a list of people who were shut in who weren't, weren't able to, I know Mr. Studo did too. Just go knock on the door and deliver the package too. And people were extremely grateful for being included, not being forgotten. And these were people who would normally have attended the sit-down dinner. But that too just added an additional exclamation point to the, to the benefit and the value of what was, what was done. So congratulations again to Brad and Linda Jones and Senator Tar. They did a terrific job and again, very creative in their approach. And it was smooth too, pretty good. Nobody got run over. And again, people were extremely generous, as you put it, extremely generous to the food pantry and bringing some, some goods and things. So it was just an all-around great day. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Okay, so I think that concludes the Board Member Reports. And we're going to move on. And thank you for your patience. We're moving on to the 7:30 public hearing on Paradise R2, Inc., Doing Business as New England Beverage. I'm just going to read the notice of public hearing. And oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilberto.
Sorry to interrupt, but I did see that there's a question in the chat relative to the focus groups, I think, that Mr. Walner was speaking to earlier. A question from Mr. Oba was how many focus groups took place?
Yep. So again, I'll look at the chat just real quick. Yeah. Oh, Abigail, so Abigail was on one of those. So thanks for asking that question. There was five in total and about 15 people per focus group. Then again, the classification was key informants. There was like six or seven key informants in town. And then there was a rising seniors, which represents the people recently without kids in the schools who are in their 50s was another group. Another group was seniors, people who are, you know, clearly seniors in town. Another group was stakeholders, various town employees who have a key interest in this. And the last group was whoever couldn't make any of those four ended up in the fifth group. So we had five groups in all. And just briefly, I heard very consistent enthusiasm for the participants for a number of things we're trying to work on as a board and as a community.
And so five, five, five groups of 15 participants. 10 to 15?
Yeah.
Okay, 50 to 75 people.
Not really accurate. I'm sorry, but I was in a focus group. And while they sent out invitations to probably 12 to 15 people, it was very clear in the invitation, it was all but underlined, that this was, you know, if you wanted to come, that was great. And the group that I was in, there were only five people that responded and attended.
Yeah, you were in the number five. You were in the last residual group that was, people who couldn't make other ones were in the last group.
Okay, so, but you just need to be careful that it's not five times 15. Just saying.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the next order of business, which is the public hearing on Paradise R2. This is the notice of public hearing in accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which is a virtual public hearing held by the Select Board Monday, December 7, 2020, at 7:30 PM on the application of Paradise R2 Incorporated, Doing Business as New England Beverage, for the transfer of the package store, all alcohol license from Sunny Raya, Inc., Doing Business as New England Beverage, and redemption license. To be exercised at 160 Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a two-story building occupying 9,980 square feet. Selling space on the first floor, offices and storage on the second. This hearing is a continuation of hearings held on October 19 and November 2, 2020, with the, by the Select Board. So.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. My name is James Rudser. I have previously been before this board with respect to not only this application, but then the, the discipline matters that were heard last month. Having had a chance to review the original October 9 hearing and then the application that my client submitted, I would suggest that no additional updates are necessary. And Kevin Lang and his wife Susan had been in, had had two prior liquor stores. And at the time he entered the contract for this agreement, he was exploring the possibility of acquiring an interest in another store. I can tell you what that was. That involved Broadway Social Wine, Inc., a liquor store, licensed package store on West Broadway in South Boston. I know a little bit about it because I represent the, having represented Kevin in the past and I actually represent this family that owns that store. And as a result of that, you know, they both obtained separate counsel with respect to the written contract. I do know that this application is complete, that that transaction did never, did not occur. Just to put it into context, that Kevin said that he had an interest. Well, Kevin was working at the store and essentially conducting his due diligence in the store for a lengthy period of time during this, the beginning part of 2020. Much like he was working in the store at this location at 160 Main Street, when in fact, the license premises inspection was undertaken. That all being said, you know, my client is a responsible, experienced operator of licensed establishments under General Laws, Chapter 138. I had previously proposed at the last meeting that this board could anticipate him contracting with a company called ID Science to provide for license scanning. And in fact, he has entered into that agreement with them and then the system will be installed in the store in the event that the proposed transfer is approved by this board, as well as the proposed pledge. I would point out that an important part of this is the pledge of the license because it's essentially seller financing. My client is, you know, paying a substantial amount of cash. But there is a pledge of the assets that would be proposed to be transferred. And that pledge is not to a bank or anything, but rather to the current operator of the license. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. I saw my client here earlier. I can't see him here now. So I apologize if he got disconnected, but I definitely saw him at one point.
He's still up there.
There he is.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm there now.
Okay. Welcome, thank you. Okay, do members have any questions? Well, let's kick it off with you, Mr. O'Leary.
No, other than just maybe a little further explanation as to the misunderstanding as far as his interest. I mean, obviously, I would think that if some cash or there was an outlay of cash for an interest in another business that would have taken place. I guess I just don't understand the misstatement at the time. Or maybe there was some cash put out and was returned. Just a further explanation as to just clarifying what situation was.
Okay, that, that, and it's my understanding that there was a contract that was entered into for him to acquire an interest in another store. That was an executory contract. He never closed on it. And the reason he didn't close on it is because the purchase price under that, to get half a store, was the purchase price to buy this entire store. So when the opportunity to acquire this entire store came up, Kevin Lang withdrew from that contract and then signed the contract with Sunny Raya to obtain this thing. During that period of time, while it was under contract, he was conducting his due diligence in the South Boston store. He was in the store. And I think that may have been the result of the misunderstanding that he had some interest when he blurted that out. My client was nervous. He's never appeared before licensing board before. I have previously done licensing work for him. I quite frankly, don't understand why I wasn't involved, but I am now. So my apologies to the board and I hope I've addressed Mr. O'Leary's question.
Well, I hope I'm not as frightening this time as I may have been last time. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. All set, Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Walner? Any questions about the packet or to the licensee?
No, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Studo?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm all set.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto?
Whenever my turn comes up, Madam Chair, I don't know if you have any questions.
Yeah, that's okay. You can, you go next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps to Attorney Rudser, good evening, sir. So going through the, the application, you know, we did a quick search of the Secretary of State's records and I'm trying to reconcile the establishments with which Mr. Lang's name shows up with the list that's been provided here.
Okay.
So East Broadway Incorporated, I see clearly identified as, on the Secretary of State's website, Lynn Liquor Mart. I also see clearly identified as well on there. Dairy Mart, could you just tell us where is that located?
Dairy Mart was a store, I'm sorry, Dairy Mart was a store on Route 60 in Revere. And that's, that's actually the transaction where I first met Mr. Lang because my clients, the same actually principals of Broadway Social Wines were the owner of that store and they sold it to Mr. Lang.
Okay. And Crest Avenue Wine and Spirits? I'm not able to reconcile that one with, with the Secretary of State's records.
That was a liquor store in Winthrop that Mr. Lang had purchased and then subsequently sold.
Okay, and so just quickly going from the Secretary of State's site, 26-28 New Ocean, CNL Incorporated?
Okay. That, Mr. Lang has also been involved in real estate investments. And so there's a number of entities that were real estate holding companies that he had previously had or had an interest in. I can tell you, for example, the Furnace Brook, 112 Furnace Street was, was a property, I believe it was in Marshfield or something, that Mr. Lang had, had purchased a bank-owned piece of property. So while he has had investments in liquor stores, he has also had investments in real estate. But, and so that's why there may appear, may or may not appear to be a crossover.
So, okay. And then this additional company, Riley NK Incorporated?
I don't know anything about Riley. I can see that it was created in 2014 and dissolved in 2017. I, I'm not aware of it, having any interest in, in any licensed establishment.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, of course.
Riley NK Incorporated, DBA as of Crest Ave Wine and Spirit, which is, was sold.
So that, that was an alcoholic licensed establishment.
Oh, that was the disclosed one. I'm sorry. That was Crest Ave Wine and Spirits. He owned, he created, according to his answer, he created Riley NK in 2014 to take, to purchase the Crest Ave Wine and Spirits, which is disclosed on 6B on his application. I think part of the problem is, is that he put the license name and not the corporate name on, 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 on the application for transfer.
So Attorney Rudser, so the first, the last one we discussed, 26 to 28 New Ocean, CNL, it's listed as incorporated to operate a liquor store in the Commonwealth?
That was Lynn Liquor Mart.
Okay.
And that was disclosed under Section 62C of his application.
Okay, and so the last one, Mega Liquor Incorporated?
That was, I believe, a store that his brother owns in, in Saugus. Let me just take a peek.
That was in Lynn, Attorney Rudser.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the one with your, that your brother, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So Mr. Lang does not have an interest in that or did not have an interest in it?
He no longer has an interest in it, no.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, but those would be, that's, that's Lynn Liquor Mart or is that the one you're talking about? I don't, I don't think.
Lynn Liquor Mart is disclosed. Madam Chair, Lynn Liquor Mart is disclosed on Section 6C. And that's the, that's the one store that he had the license prob, he had a three-day suspension back in 2011.
So there's Mega Liquor Store? It's Lynn Liquor Mart Incorporated and Mega Liquor Incorporated?
Mega Liquor was a store that his, his brother had. And it was organized in 2014 and dissolved, or pardon me, 2004 and dissolved in 2007. That's a store that his brother currently owns, but he had created this entity to take title and it was his brother as the end up, ended up acquiring the business.
So, but.
It never had a license.
Mega Liquor never had a liquor license?
No.
Did it ever have a storefront?
I, I think his brother still runs a store there, but under his brother's name. With Kevin doesn't have any interest in that.
Okay. So of all of the entities listed on the Corporations Division that are attached to Kevin, you are stating on your oath that you've identified on this form every liquor establishment for which you've had either a financial, a direct or an indirect interest?
Yes, yes.
You've listed all of those, Mr. Lang? And you've also listed any of the places for all of these entities for which there was any disciplinary action?
And then we stand by the disclosure of the disciplinary action.
And also that you don't have any other establishments that you own outside of Massachusetts, do you?
No, no, ma'am.
Did you have any establishments outside of Massachusetts?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'll go back to the packet. And for, just for the members of the public attending, can you just go over the financial transaction that's involved here? And then you're doing a pledge of stock in, and license as well, which we have to take a vote on?
Yes, ma'am. The total, the price for the business is, is $875,000 with the approximate value of the inventory that will be taken at, or about the time of closing of $500,000 for a total purchase price of 1.375. Sunny Raya is going to take back two notes. One, a 10-year promissory note for $475,000. And then the inventory, which is estimated to be at about $500,000, will be. will be the subject of a second five-year promissory note. And that's the pledge that we're looking to pledge the license in the event that it is transferred back to Son Araya to secure the performance of each of those notes. So, of the 1.3, he's going to be putting in, oh, good, about 375 in cash, financing 500, or 475, and then financing the inventory.
Okay. All right.
The source of the, and I can say, the source of the cash that is, that he's using here comes from a real estate investment that he had in Marblehead, where he sold a house on 1 Thompson Road. I was involved in both the acquisition and the sale of that.
Yes. Okay, and does anyone have any other questions? Mr. Gilberto, all set?
Yep.
Okay, I am going to open it up to anybody, members of the public attending who wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this? And I don't see anyone? Nobody in the chat? Okay, so seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Any further discussion from the board? None. All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the transfer of license and pledge of license of Paradise R2, Inc., DBA New England Beverage, 160 Main Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Justudo, and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. O'Leary.
Just two things, one is, I want to, if there's affirmative vote here, but either way, I'd like to thank Mr. Sonny Ray for being a good member of the business community here for a number of years, and wish him well going forward with his new family, extended family, or expanded family. And again, want to wish Kevin and his partner here much success going forward. Again, we need good, vibrant members of the business community here, and I hope they succeed.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Leary.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Justudo to approve, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion, seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Justudo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Amanu Pelley is aye. Okay, thank you. All set?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the select board, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is an 8 o'clock show cause hearing on Route 28 Lucky Mart, and this is, as the members know, a continuation of the show cause hearing that we previously continued. Mr. Gilberto, I don't know if you have the dates of that, trying to find the hearing notice.
There with me one moment, Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm scrolling down to that, too.
We're probably doing the same.
Beginning on page 92. Beginning on page 91, actually, of the file.
Madam Chair, through you, the hearing was originally scheduled for November 16th, and it was rescheduled to this evening's meeting for 8 o'clock PM.
December 7th, and do we have anybody in attendance from Route 28 Lucky Mart? Is Mr. Patel here? And we did receive a notice of representation from Attorney Delaney, is Attorney Delaney?
Madam Chair, Sean Delaney, good evening, good evening, board members. For some reason, I can't get my video to come up, but you know what I look like, I think most of you, and you're probably better off not seeing my face.
I just want to see what your COVID outfit is.
Well, I'm perfectly dressed this evening, Mr. O'Leary. I'm like I was the last time I was before this board. So, I'm here on behalf of Lucky Mart and Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel's here, he's on a telephone line. So, we are here, and I know that I had previously done discussions with Mr. Gilberto on Friday, and I wish to thank him for endeavoring to get me all the materials related to this hearing on Friday afternoon, so I'm going to withdraw my motion to continue the hearing. We've got to see this. If the board is ready to proceed.
Excellent, okay, so now we are, I believe, we were joined by our, I could be wrong, but I think we were joined, oh, there you are, Chief Murphy! Now we can see you! So, Chief, if you don't mind, I know you did a little bit of an explanation to us at the first, the first show cause hearing, so if you don't mind explaining why we're here, what the violations are, and a little bit of the background for us again.
He's muted.
No, you're muted, Chief.
How's that? On Sunday, October 18th, 2020, Detectives Michael Murray and Lucci, with the assistance of a 20-year-old confidential person, performed alcohol compliance checks throughout the town of North Reading at our various liquor license establishments. They done periodically in an effort to reduce the availability of alcohol to people under the age of 21. These checks are done in compliance with the training and guidelines set forth by the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, and as part of those guidelines, we notify the public of the compliance checks through electronic and paper media. We had done that three days prior to this, to this alcohol compliance check. We did issue all the paperwork to the underage person and got all signatures and have all that on file. So, on Sunday, October 18th, an alcohol compliance check was completed at 202 North Street, which is Lucky Mart. After that, compliance checks, I received a report that there was a violation of permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to it, a violation of Mass General law, chapter 138, section 34, which is sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under the age of 21. According to Detective Murray's report, the underage person was instructed to attempt to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light beer. The person was instructed to leave the premises if a state identification card or license was requested by the seller. The officers monitored that person, the underage person, and approximately one later, the underage person exited the store with a black shopping bag containing a six-pack of Bud Light bottles. The underage person told the officers they had just purchased the beer from the only male that was working at the cash register inside of Lucky Mart. The officers then went inside, they identified themselves as North Reading police officers, and informed the male that was working at the cash register, who was identified as Peter Thonaldine, that he had just sold alcohol to a minor. That clerk did respond, that he said the person said they were 21 years old. The store manager was nearby and said that Mr. Thonaldine did indeed card the person, and he said he would replay the cameras for them. The detective told the manager that the person was not in any possession of any identification, as all possessions were removed as part of the ABCC guidelines. A violation notice was issued to the establishment, and we have it on file. Mr. Thonaldine was advised that the establishment would be receiving a notice from the town of North Reading regarding this violation, and he was asked that the violation be written to another employee in the store. He further stated that he wasn't an employee of the store, he was just a friend who stopped by to watch the game and had only conducted one transaction while the other employee was cleaning. The detective noted that when he entered the store to speak with the clerk, Mr. Thonaldine was standing behind the counter at the cashier's position, which is restricted to the public by a swinging door. The clerk was further advised to follow all governing laws and regulations regarding the selling and distribution of alcohol. We did follow up the next day with our, with our DFC grant coordinator and one of our detectives to determine whether or not Mr. Thonaldine had a responsible service certificate. The goal was to learn, learn if the seller did have that certificate at the time of the sale. So, they did, when they visited the Lucky Mart, Mr. Viimo Patel, who was identified as the owner, was working. The detective explained that they were following up on that October 18th violation. Detective Lucci had asked the server, if the server that day, Mr. Patethonaldine, had his training, since he said he was not an employee. Mr. Patel said that Mr. Thonaldine was in fact an employee and was on his training yesterday and had a certification. Our DFC coordinator requested to see the certification as part of her audit, and Mr. Patel told her that he would produce it at his hearing. They then, they then said that they would be reporting that to me, and then he pulled up a responsible server, a training certificate for Mr. Thonaldine, which was on his phone. It was dated to expire October 18th, 2023. It appeared that the certification was completed sometime after the violation on October 18th, 2020. That's a summary of the facts.
Okay, do the members have any questions of Chief Murphy with regard to the summary of the facts? No, pretty straightforward. Mr. Delaney, on behalf of the licensee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, on behalf of my client, I'd like to state to the board, as well as Chief Murphy, that my client recognizes that a license to sell alcohol in anywhere in the Commonwealth, particularly in North Reading, is a privilege, it's not a right, and he's very disturbed, not only regarding the incident that occurred, which is very serious, but also the fact that he's recently learned, upon my review of the documentation received from the town administrator, of the lack of truthfulness of his employee and his manager upon the arrival of Officer Murray and Detective Lucci. He's considering now what disciplinary action he's taking as an employer or against the two employees as a result of the totality of the incident, but most importantly, the lack of truthfulness of both employees. So, that's something that's ongoing internally, but I want to assure this board and the chief that disciplinary actions will be taken on an employer or employee level soon following this hearing. I'd like to point out that my client has operated this business for about two-plus years in North Reading. I am aware of one prior incident, but also, if the board is not aware, my client operates several other locations throughout the Commonwealth, none of which have a liquor license, but they do have tobacco licenses, and he's never been in violation in any other establishment. There was never any disciplinary action anywhere at all in any of the other establishments that he owns or operates. There's probably, in my count, there's at least six or seven other establishments that he owns or operates throughout the Commonwealth. He's been in business for over nearly five years in all these locations. So, it's a significant period of time, I point that out. And also, we're not disputing, obviously, the facts of this case at all. However, I'd ask the board in its consideration here, knowing that there's been one prior incident, but also considering the fact that Mr. Patel, throughout the whole pandemic that we're enduring, has never shut his business down, was able to operate it as a service to the community, and has done so not only with employees that he has, but as the chief indicated, on the following, on the follow-up day by his department, Mr. Patel himself was working in the establishment. So, he's a positive contributor to the community in that regard. He employs several people, not only here in North Reading, but also throughout the Commonwealth. So, I hope the court, this is the court, the board would consider that in its ultimate decision-making process here. And having some familiarity with what the board may do in an incident like this, I would ask the board to, if it's going to suspend the license, what I think it will do, suspend it for no more than three days. And I'd ask the board to also consider not doing this over either the Christmas or the New Year's holiday. I know the board has been pretty consistent with what they do in terms of time period, when they do it. But again, going back to the times that we live in right now, this would be a significant impact upon the financial wherewithal of this particular business if, in fact, the board makes a decision to suspend this license for either the Christmas or the New Year's holiday time period. So, therefore, I'd ask the board, if it's going to suspend the license, suspend it prior to December 20th, or have the end date no later than December 20th, or postpone the suspension of any license to no earlier than the Martin Luther King weekend. And again, on behalf of my client, I wish to express his apologies to Chief Murphy, this board, and the community of North Reading for the actions of his two employees on that particular day. Thank you.
Okay, questions of my colleagues? Mr. O'Leary, any questions?
I have no questions at this point.
Okay.
I may have comments, ready for comment, but.
Well, we're ready for comment, sure. Mr. Wallner, any questions?
I guess, I'm not sure, because we've gone through this once with them before, and now we're on the second round. I'm not sure what our precedent has been in the past, so maybe that's in the comments section, but that's what I'm curious to know.
Okay, Mrs. Gonzalez, any questions?
The hearing? Yeah, does Lucky Mart have the software installed there that they check the IDs with?
I believe they do. Mr. Patel, who's on the telephone conference line, can enlighten the board as to the exact software he has for his employees to check IDs. Mr. Patel?
I mean, obviously, you have to ID first to be able to use that, but I'm just curious to know if you have it.
Yes, we do have ID scanner at our location. And in the fact, at this point in this world we are living at this point, we are catching, like, if we're scanning in our system or any systems, the kids have become so smart at this point, they're using the photos of, they are using someone else's barcode matching the fake ID. If you scan it, there is no way you can figure out, and in this pandemic, if we ask someone to get their ID in our hand, people are a little, like, in this pandemic, they are like, a little scared to give the ID in the hand, but still we verify in our hand and we doing the visual checking because of pandemic.
Mr. Patel, I can clarify that a little bit. So, what you're saying, in light of, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I just want to be, so we are clear to this board, that what you're saying is during the pandemic, if someone comes in with a valid ID, but they're wearing a mask, it may scan, and it may be valid, but you can't be 100% certain with someone wearing a mask that that's the particular person behind the mask?
Yes, because we, yes.
But you do have the software to.
We do have, yes.
To the board member's question, you do have the software that scans the identifications, correct?
Yes, we do have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Gonzalez?
Nothing.
Mr. Justudo?
Yes, just two. One, we're either, well, I guess one employee was new, but was the other employee employed during the last violation? And also, what was the disciplinary reaction, if any, of any of the employees during the first?
The June, June 2019?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, give me a spot.
So, the, so that employee, the who was in all in the last, last incident, he was there at the present, and he was, started to give him the training on that day. But that was incidents happened, there was a coffee was spilled outside, so he had to go outside to clean up the coffee. So, while all this incidents happened, he said, can you take care for two minutes? And on those five minutes, everything happened. When the cops arrived on that time also, that. When the cops arrived on that time also, that manager was cleaning the coffee counter because there was a coffee was spilled outside.
Hold on, so wait, so this, excuse me, a follow-up. So the same manager happened to not be at the counter to back to back? Am I reading that correctly? So.
He had to back, he had to go out because of there was a coffee was spilled outside and someone, instead of someone's fall off on this floor, floor, he decided to go outside to clean up and, and all these things happened.
Okay, but that, so this is the same manager for both instances?
Uh.
Last year and this year? I was asking about last year.
Last year, no, la- last year was someone, last year was someone else.
And what happened to that, any disciplinary reaction on that person?
That person is already left.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up on Mrs. Gonzalez's question to you, Mr. Patel, because it is clear that you're, you, even though you're saying you have this software and you're saying you use it and everybody's crafty and can figure out a way around it, you didn't actually use it this day. There was no card to be IDed and when this sale took place. Do you acknowledge that?
He, Madam Chair, he, he does acknowledge that, that it was a new employee, no excuses, just agree with the facts as presented by Chief Murphy.
It doesn't make a difference, Attorney Delaney, if he has a software program there because he's not using it, he's not training the employees on it. That's pretty much the facts here and.
Well, I would, I would disagree, I would disagree that that's not, that's not.
I'm not hearing a single thing explaining what they're gonna do about this. And now they've had two instances of the same exact thing, selling to a minor in the same exact circumstance where they were notified ahead of time that this was going to happen and he's still not there. And maybe he's spread thin, like you said, he's got eight other establishments he's busy with, so he's not focusing on North Reading. So maybe he's spread too thin. What is he doing to train employees? What is he going to do not to have this happen again? And we haven't even decided what the measure of, of response is going to be. Suspension, revocation, we haven't decided that yet. So this is a second incident, same exact, almost the same exact fact pattern with the same exact excuse, oh, the IDs are good, they're really good at fooling us. And now we have a mass that's fooling us. But this was one out of multiple, multiple places that were, that were the subject of these compliance checks and, and only two of them had an issue in a sale like this. So, and this one, this is a second incident. So what is he doing to prevent this from happening? I haven't heard a single thing about that.
Well, what, what he's been doing since that time period, you heard the chief indicate that the employee that did the sale was tips, tips trained soon thereafter. And since that time, Mr. Patel himself has been with this employee on multiple occasions while the employee's been working and going through the liquor sales with him. And in fact, Mr. Patel, there was a lot of business information on this. What I'm leading up to is, Mr. Patel had shared with me several text messages between himself and this employee following that date and that incident, in which the employee was indicating how he had actually stopped people. There were invalid IDs that he caught and also people that came in claiming they had bought there before, saying, hey, you're new, but you know, this, this is what we do, you can sell it to us. And we didn't sell to those that were underage or without ID following that incident. I can forward those along, but there's some business or corporate information involved. I didn't want to, I think it was appropriate for me to share that. But I can tell you the content of those text messages and so forth, that this employee knows now what he needs to do. I don't believe you're gonna see again from Mr. Patel or any other employee, he's taking steps that no employee is gonna be near a register unless they're fully trained, fully certified and understands how to use the scanning device and make sure there's no one, no one that purchases alcohol that would help first producing a valid ID. He's told me that he doesn't care if someone walks in and someone's 80 years of, it looks 80 years of age to go into the, I ask for an identification where they won't be served in his establishment by any employee. So those are the things that was done in response to, it was in response to Mr. Gonzalez's question regarding, is there a system? And we just wanted to explain, he does have a system, but there is some difficulty. And I know this from other clients, there is some difficulty during this current age that we're in unfortunately, that there is some difficulty. You may get a valid ID, but it may not be the person that's actually purchasing the liquor. That's not, he's not making that as an excuse in this instance, because it doesn't apply. But as in, in explaining what sort of scanning device and equipment that he has purchased and installed with his business operation in North Reading. So those are the measures he's taken in terms of doing his very best to ensure that this never happens again in this location or any location that he owns or operates.
Yes, Miss, I mean, that's, I, I appreciate your explanation of that. If he's allowed to keep his license after this, I appreciate you explaining what steps he's gonna take to ensure this. But there's also the, what he said the last time, well, we'll do two forms of ID here. He did no I, no ID here. And so I can appreciate taking the steps after the fact. But I'm, I'd also like to know what he's doing to train his employees not to hinder an investigation like this, basically blatantly lying to the police. That's what they did. So what is he doing about that aspect of this, which I think is, is of course as serious of a violation in my opinion as the sale to the minor? But what is he doing about training the staff on complying with the law regarding liquor licensing?
Well, I think it's, I view your comment or question in twofold. One, it's what he's doing to train and also what he takes is very serious. And I started with my initial comments to the board regarding his concern of the untruthfulness of the lack of truthfulness of his employees to the investigating offices. And that's what he's contemplating in terms of what he's going to do in terms of an employer or employee disciplinary action going forward, which he just learned about this today upon my review of the documentation and then confirming with him. So he hasn't ultimately made a decision, but I suspect that at a minimum, there'll be a suspension, if not a dismissal of one of both employees. Obviously, we recognize it's a very difficult time, but no excuse. I mean, no one can accept the, the lack of truthfulness from anyone, particularly in this situation here. Going to your issue about what he's doing in terms of training, I think I've hit on it, but also I'll reiterate and also back up to the facts of the case. What should not have happened was a new employee being left behind, a register without supervision. No matter what had occurred, he knows that the manager probably should have sent this, not probably, definitely should have sent this new employee to clean up whatever spill it may have been, leave the manager behind, the cash register. So there's no one, any new employee has to be sufficiently trained with a coworker, with a supervisor for a sufficient period of time before they'll be allowed to operate at, at the location alone. And that'll be, it's, it's laid out, that's what he's doing now, that's what he will continue to do until he is satisfied that the new employee is educated and knows the proper procedure in the sale of whether it's alcohol or any tobacco products.
Okay.
He takes this very serious and he, and as I stated earlier, he knows it's a, this license is all right. This board has every, many, many options right now. So he recognizes that, he knows how serious it is, but he's also investing a lot of money and assets into this particular location. He certainly doesn't want to lose this license.
I, I can appreciate what you're saying, Attorney Delaney, but you just said that he just found out today about what is, what these two individuals did and this happened October 18th. And I would think based on the series that would happen, he'd want to get in there and interview them immediately and get to the bottom of it, talk to the chief, figure out what exactly happened and how to prevent it in the future.
Well, until he had counseling, he didn't know, he didn't know he had a right to request all the documentation that I had requested from the town administrator once I was retained. So he wasn't aware of what was the contents of the report until I reviewed those reports and then discussed them with.
Okay, any other questions or, yes, Chief, Chief Murphy, I can see you have your hand up.
So I just had a clarification and I have my report from 2019 to Mr. Studo's question. So the clerk at that time was Marmick Patel and the clerk was different this time, but the manager was a Viomel Patel. I'm not sure if Marmick is still working or not, but that was the 2019 case.
Okay.
And I had one more, one more comment, I guess. As part of, we, we do enforcement, but we also do education as part of our prevention efforts. And our DFC coordinator has sent the letter back in June to all liquor license establishments, essentially because of COVID and people wearing masks, asking them to rely on their tips training, which there's a lot of other techniques to use, you know, questioning the database, zip codes. So there are other ways to determine whether or not the ID that the person's actually possessing is, is them. You can ask a lot of questions because there's a lot of identifying information and most likely they don't remember everything if it's a fake ID.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions of the members of the board? So I think for, for seeing no further questions, I think at this point, prior to moving on action, I think we do a finding of facts. And I can kick it off for my colleagues. That essentially this licensee, number one, the licensee was notified of the compliance check in advance by electronic paper and media methods. On October 18th, 2020, the compliance check occurred. At the establishment, the licensee sold alcohol to a minor in violation of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 34, which is a violation of liquor law. The individual, the clerk that sold the alcohol, did not check an ID. The individual who then claimed to be the manager said that the, in the clerk did card the purchaser. That individual was actually not, the clerk was apparently, they then told the investigator that that individual was not working there, just attempting to try to confuse the investigator. So there was a lack of truthfulness on the part of the employee and the manager and essentially hindering that investigation by trying to mislead or provide false information. And at this establishment, there is also a prior incident of sales to a minor that occurred for which this licensee's license was suspended for three days. And that prior incident of sale to a minor occurred with a fake ID occurred June 8th, 2019. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that? No? Okay. Do you want to discuss? Mr. Studo?
So, uh, it's something, well, you never want to see a business in a situation where they may lose revenue, but in this case, I mean, it's just a couple of comments. One time's a mistake, two times is a pattern, three times a habit. So I feel like this board has to consider that this can't be a habit. I've also seen that, learning from my experience outside of talk and especially in this country, the one pay, the one way people really learn is when it hits their wallet and they learn to hurry. So I do think that, uh, it, it just really that the second time offense and then just seemingly that two years in a row, the person in charge was doing a remedial task while the violation was occurring. I mean, when you put everything together, I mean, I'm one for spin and I like a good story, but it just, when you add everything up, it just really adds up to the fact that we can go around all night. But in my opinion, some sort of penalty should be imposed. I, I don't, I wouldn't say revocation, I don't know for that point, you know, I'm kind of new to this kind of process. But I'd say that the one thing I'll add, as much as it would hurt, it's gotta be done when it counts. And I think that, I mean, it's gonna count in December, so you know, that's my opinion that I, you know, I, I think that it's some, it's unfortunate, but at the same time, it's something where everyone will agree that if we are sitting here in a couple of years and it's third time's a charm, it's, it's just gonna, we're all gonna look bad. So that's just my opinion that I think that, you know, any suspension that would happen, if there's going to be one, and that's the pleasure of the board, as you like to say a lot of the times, Madam Chair, I think should happen in December and, you know, I'll, I'll just wait to see what other members think on, you know, on their take and then maybe even Chief Murphy, I don't know if it's him, whoever would recommend of what they would think is an appropriate length of time. So that's my comment.
I don't know if there's any history you can impart on that, Mr. Gilbert, or if there, if there has been a previous establishment like this that's had successive violations like this and what, what the, I guess, penalty was.
Sure, so Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We've, we've assembled a spreadsheet of this information that I know was not in the, the board's packet for this evening and was updated today with the more current information. And so the, you know, looking back, you know, it ranges whether, when there's been a second, a second violation, there's been, you know, sequential three-day violation. So the first violation would be a three-day and the second violation would also be a three-day. There's an instance where there was a substantial amount of time where somebody was up to a third violation, but there was like a nine-year period in between. The best example I can find, it would appear to be a five-day suspension and that's between a 2002 suspension at Christopher's Market for three days and then a subsequent five-day suspension in 2007. So it, it looks like the board has done a, you know, a, a, a three-day suspension. It's also done a seven-day suspension for a first-time violation as well for Convenience Plus in 1995. So there isn't a really crystal clear history, but it does appear that we've gone to five days when there's been a, a second violation, you know, under the common, the same ownership. But I, to be clear, you know, this is more the practice. The board has been very clear about not having a policy and I think it's historically taken each violation on its, on its merits and considered any, any factors, including any aggravating factors.
I think that's a testament to the, to this, to this board over the years that they've only had those few number of successive incidences, you know? So, Mrs. Gonzalez, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments from the last time. Again, there was no carding done at all. And the minor had made a statement that that place had a reputation of not carding. That was in, in the notes here. So I've actually spoken to a reliable source that is of age now, but said that was the place to go when you worked. So with that in mind, and then looking at what we did last time, because it was the first offense, the attorney asked us if we would not suspend over Columbus Day and rather do Labor Day or, or do it over Columbus Day rather than Labor Day. And, and we did that. So that was being kind to, to him. And then he promised, in looking at the notes, that anyone under 35 would be carded. So now, now it's 84, I think, or Tony Delaney said. So now, now it's eighty-four, I think, or Tony Delaney said. So, I mean, there's, you know, like Mr. Studo said, you know, this is now a habit. Yeah.
Anything else? No? Yes, Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also reviewing the same notes. It's set in on page one oh three of our packet. I actually said that Mr. Wallner stated the licensee should work together with the police department to come up with a better practice. Obviously that was ignored. So I am probably want to go a little heavier on how to do this. I think a five day is starting to feel like, based on what Mr. Gilberto has said, is that we should be looking at a five day suspension and I don't think it should be before or after the holidays. As a matter of fact, I think it should be right in the middle of it because I think it should be painful. I think it's too close to what happened last year. I think there's the, you know, misleading and lying going on and, you know, apparently they weren't paying attention a year ago. You gotta pay attention now. We just can't go another round with this. So I think it has to hurt.
Mr., is that Mr. Wallner?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr., was it Mr. O'Larry? Okay, Mr. O'Larry, I wasn't.
Sorry. Again, I've been here for a while as far as the board and the different actions that we've taken over the course of time. And we take into consideration again, whether it's same ownership and whether it's, and again, the, the number of circumstances where it's been the same ownership in a short period of time has been few and far between, if at all. There hasn't been anyone that's been, that I recall, you know, within the one year, basically a year of each other under the same ownership. And, and part of what we looked at in the past and considered is, you know, whether it be progressive discipline, what the extenuating circumstances were, how cooperative they were, how, you know, they came in with the hat in their hand and admitted as this licensee has to this evening, you know, all those things were taken into consideration. And then I was involved in the hearing where there was a seven day suspension. Again, circumstances were substantially different than the first time. And again, that timeframe was probably five or six years difference, but, but again, same ownership. In, in this particular case, I think what's compelling again is the lack of oversight of, of the new employee, the lack of honesty and forthrightness in relation to being approached by the police department, so when it occurred. And it's, it's somewhat disturbing. And again, the timeframe is disturbing with about fourteen months, fifteen months difference. You know, so, you know, I would be inclined to move forward with some progressive discipline, not revocation, but progressive discipline above the three days. You know, I'd be in favor of a five day suspension as far as the timeframe that goes along with it. Again, I also recognize that, you know, these are very difficult and trying times for businesses to survive. These are not normal times. So I'd be receptive to, to looking at something outside of the holiday, but definitely a five day suspension. So again, my suggestion would be the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth of December. Five day suspension. And again, if I see them back here, I wouldn't rule out the contemplation of a revocation. So they have to take it seriously. And this license is worth something, obviously to the licensee. And it, but it's also important for us as the licensing board to take it seriously. We always have as far as selling to minors and need to impart upon them the importance of being forthright and straightforward with our police department and enforcement officials. And it's, it's important again to stress that this wasn't done without notice. So that this is what I have a hard time understanding when we always have a licensee before us. When they've been notified in writing, they've been notified in the newspaper that, you know, it's going to take place over a certain period of time and they're still not ill-prepared and fall into the trap. So anyway, it's, uh, I'm in favor of a five day suspension. My suggestion would be the sixteenth through the twentieth. If the board is inclined to do some other dates, that's fine too.
Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I, I just don't feel like, I, I mean, saying that the business has been hurt during the pandemic. I mean, this isn't a restaurant. I, I feel like liquor stores have done better during the pandemic because, you know, people are home and, and drinking more. But I feel like, I don't feel like they probably have been that hurt. Not, it's not like the restaurant business. So I, I would be fine over the holiday.
Just in relation about, yeah, you know, yeah, this is a beer and wine license, a convenience store. It's not a full-fledged liquor store. And again, this particular establishment is surrounded less than a quarter mile north and a quarter mile south is full-fledged liquor stores too. So I mean, as far as, I don't know what percentage of the business is, is beer and wine for this, uh, this individual and nor do I care to know. But again, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a matter of convenience. People go there rather than the liquor store. Again, a quarter mile north and a quarter mile south is a, a full liquor store with far more selections. But anyway, that being said.
Okay, so it sounds like at least there's a consensus without speaking further forward, but it sounds like there is a consensus with regard to more, not a revocation, but an increase from not three days, but five days. It sounds like a five day suspension is what I believe the majority is contemplating. And also the dates and Mr. O'Larry has proposed dates that carry over a weekend that's just before Christmas. And Mrs. Gon- Gonzalez, I think you're thinking of a different date than that, but do we have at least a consensus on that, on those dates that we have Mr. O'Larry proposed those? Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have another proposal of those five days? Or are you, are you all right with those? So that's, uh, that's.
I'll go with the consensus of the board, but I, I just, I just feel like if we're going to make a statement, then let's make a statement. I mean, we're not going to revocate, so let's make it hurt. I mean, this is the second time in a year. It's, um, it's been clear that they're, they're not even carding. Never mind the, never mind the scanning and, and the mask and you don't know. Like first you gotta ask for the ID before you even deal with those situations. So they're not even IDing. And, and we've heard that there's a reputation there that that's the place to go, you know, if you want to get some underage liquor. So I, I think a statement needs to be made here.
So I would, I would throw out dates of either the twentieth through the twenty-fourth or the twenty-seventh through the thirty-first. One leads up to Christmas and one leads up to New Year's. We're going to do five days. And I'm probably more in favor of the twenty-seventh through the thirty-first.
Mrs. Studo, any thoughts on that?
On the day, whatever, I mean, on the number of days? I mean, I, I think, yeah, being, just speaking from personal experience and knowing how people buy, I think the date is more important than the days. You know, the next, because I can tell you that you take New Year's Eve weekend, that's going to be more than any other five days you can pick. So I'm saying that if we want to be, you know, again, it's not about being punitive. It's about just showing that also others that this is what happens. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a big deal in this instance that I know it's repeat offender and, but we also, we, we have enough problems that are worrying about, you know, a drunk eighteen-year-old behind the wheel. Like that's just like, it's like the cherry on top to everything else going on. You know, and I'm not saying that would happen, but I'm just, you know, kind of, so I'd say that three or five, I'm with both. To me, I, I think, you know, maybe, I don't even want to call it compromise, but maybe something else we could consider just to show that, you know, no one's trying to hurt someone during COVID is that maybe you do three days, but you do it at the absolutely worst time for a business, which would be New Year's Eve weekend, including New Year's Day. Like I'm saying.
I think we're already at, I, I was actually looking for your input on the days. I think we're already a consensus of, of five days being the suspension. So.
Then, then I would say.
Five days, but the other three members we just heard from are at five days for a suspension for this second offense within a year's time. So now we're just trying to point what days and, and just like we would do with the initial suspension, we do that over a holiday. We typically do that over a holiday weekend. So now Mr. O'Larry's proposed the holiday weekend, the weekend right before the holiday, Mr. Wallace zoned us in on the weekend right before the New Year's holiday. So, it's, uh, I was just wondering if you had a thought on that or does it even matter? I mean, that's the thing. This is punitive. It is a punishment for what the violation.
I mean, if we're going to do, to me, it's whether it's three or five, though, I think it should include the whole weekend. So I think it should be from the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. Like whatever, whatever the five days is where it's entirety of that Friday to Sunday is in it. Cause neither of those times that we just said include the Saturday, Sunday after, which are big days. But that's what I, I would say.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Gilberto.
Just, I would note for the board when considering the calendar that the establishments are required to be closed by law on December twenty-fifth. The chief can confirm, or you actually, Madam Chair, you could probably confirm. I think they may also need to be closed on January first, although I don't know if that's changed.
When all else fails, Google.
I think you're muted, Chief. You're muted. Oh, no, you're not.
I'm not anymore. So I get notification on Thanksgiving, Christmas, but I have not gotten notification on January first yet. So they are closed on Thanksgiving and, which is passed, obviously, and Christmas.
Okay.
For some reason, I thought liquor stores were closed on, you know, New Year's Day, but I might be wrong.
This could be wrong, but I'm reading something where they are open. This, last year they were open on New Year's Day. So I don't know if they would change the rules for this year coming up. But again, don't quote me on it. I'm just looking from a, a last year.
I recall that as well from a previous year. It's, it may be that they are, just, we've not been formally notified by the ABC.
Well, since we know Christmas is going to be closed for sure, then maybe the day is the twenty-second through the twenty-seventh, because then it's the, then it's the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-five doesn't apply. And then we have twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. So that gets us through Christmas plus the end, plus after that weekend. I don't know if that would be considered a six day suspension. I don't think it is. I think it's, it's still a five day because effectively you can't sell on one of the days.
Okay. Okay, so now we have.
So twenty-second to the twenty-seventh.
Now we have three different, all right, so we have three different proposals. We've got Mr. O'Larry's, Mr. Wallner's. Oh, Mr. Wallner, you gave us two. So, so let's just.
I'll just stick with the twenty-second to the twenty-seventh.
Mr. O'Larry.
You tell you what, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion. If it's a second, it gets a second. If it doesn't, it doesn't. If it gets a second, you can put it to a vote.
All right.
Madam Chair, I move to suspend for five consecutive days, the package store, all alcohol license of Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart, two oh two North Street on, uh, let's see. On Wednesday, December sixteenth through Sunday, December twentieth. And the license, that the license must be delivered to the North Running Police Department at the close of business on December fifteenth and picked up at the police station on December twenty-first.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fails. Do I hear another motion?
Yeah, sure, I'll try one. Madam Chair, I move to suspend for five consecutive days, the package store, all alcohol license of Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart, twenty, two oh two North Street on, sorry, sorry, I screwed up the date. So we have to do this over. Sorry, my calendar Xed out.
Looking before New Year's, that's the twenty-seven.
On Tuesday, on Tuesday, December twenty-ninth to to Sunday, December, uh, so Sunday, January third. Sorry. Excuse me. So on Wednesday, December thirtieth to Sunday, the January third, and that the license must be delivered to the North Running Police Department at the close of business on Tuesday, December twenty-ninth and picked up at the police station on Monday, January fourth at eight AM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And any further discussion on the motion? I, I mean, I would like to say there is, there is merit to having this suspension effectuated sooner than that, rather than later, which I think was the premise behind Mr. O'Larry's choice of dates. But we have a motion and a second. So we'll take a vote on that. Mr. O'Larry?
Before, just on discussion, again, my preference would be to again, to have it sooner rather than later. And I think as far as the punitiveness and the message that's being sent over a holiday, you know, the first, again, is a message that we can send, but I don't think, I think the message is the same. The, the impact is still five days and significant. And it says a message to this licensee and all licensees and I, I'm not looking to be as punitive as, as some of the other board members here, but appears as though there, there may be a, a majority here. So I I will reluctantly support it. But again, I want the record to show that I think it, the earlier dates as previously proposed would be, would be sending the same message.
So the, the also the impact would be the same if, if the board were to consider the dates that Mr. Wallner proposed, which is to, the consecutive days that the establishment's open of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, where it's not open on the, it's not going to be considered a suspension on a day that it's not allowed to sell anyway, but consecutive business days would be the dates that Mr. Wallner proposed. It's kind of send the same message, but it's sooner than waiting until the, you know, the beginning of January or the end of the month and the beginning of January. So I, I, I agree in, in premise to what you were trying to do, Mr. O'Larry, proposing it soon, sooner. As soon as, you know, the notice letter goes out. So, all right, so we have those dates proposed. Mr. Wallner, did you make the motion, Mr. Wallner? Because now. Mr. Studo's motion and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Okay, on the motion, any further discussion?
Go ahead.
Just again, and, and Mr. O'Larry, I, I understand what you're, I'm not trying to be, like I said, it's not, it's not a punitive, but it's more that what I've learned is that no matter what's going on in the world, business owners, because I'm one of them, we don't learn until it hits the pocket and then we learn in a hurry, in our real hurry. Faster than this board can ever teach them and faster than Chief Murphy can ever educate. So that's why I'm saying that I'd rather, and I understand that we want to do it sooner rather than later. However, I'd rather get it done right than get it done quickly. So that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, Mrs. Gonzalez, did you have anything else for deliberations?
No.
All right. Sorry, but motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. O'Larry. Mr. Wallner.
No.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Is it, discussion's over?
Discussion's over. And we're taking a vote?
Okay.
And it's, it's okay, Mrs. Gonzalez's eye. Mr. Studo.
Hi.
Alright, and you tell his eye. The motion carries the suspension. I'm getting feedback, I'm sorry, I can't hear. My wife's talking. Mr. Gilberto, can you, is there a way for you to stop that echoing?
I'm gonna try to mute everybody. Madam Chair, you are on mute.
I can't hear it now, I can't hear the, I can't hear the feedback. So the motion carries, the suspension is going to take effect for fi, it's a five-day suspension. And it'll be for twenty-nine, thirtieth, thirty-first, first and second. I had those dates correct, right? Okay, Mr. Studo, are you raising your hand?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I corrected the motion because someone pointed out I did six days by mistake. It's December, it's Wednesday, December thirtieth until January, Sunday, January the third. So that's the five days.
I'm sorry, that was my, that's my error, I apologize. Okay. Okay, so, um, thank you Attorney Delaney. We appreciate your coming to step forward and proceed on the hearing. And we hope that this, we don't have to see you again in this capacity, although we enjoy seeing and interacting with you. We don't wanna see you again on this one. And could you just explain the, you know, you can explain to the licensee, I think he's, he may be gone.
No, he's still here.
Oh, okay.
You all have safe and enjoyable holidays.
You too. Alright, thank you. Thank you, Chief, too, for helping us out with the explanation and information.
Thank you.
Alright, so our next order of business, our next order of business is the eight-thirty public hearing on the water rates and capital plan. Just need to get to that. There is a meeting notice in our packet. The Town of North Reading Select Board Water Rates and Capital Plan Virtual Hearing in accordance with the requirements of Sections one ninety-one dash sixteen and one ninety-one dash seventeen of the Code of North Reading, the Select Board, and the North Reading Water Commission will hold the annual water rate and water system capital plan hearings virtually on Monday, December seventh, twenty twenty, at eight-thirty PM with hearing information on how to access the hearing via internet and by phone. This is posted by the Select Board and publicized by the Select Board November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, and December third, twenty twenty. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With us this evening are the Acting Director of Public Works, Chris Demming, the Water Superintendent, Mark Clark, and our Consulting Engineer from Wright Pierce, Rob Williamson. You have in your packets the hearing notice. You're also joined by the Chairman of the Water Commission, Vincent Ragucci. Thank you for joining us this evening, who has provided on behalf of the Water Commission a recommendation relative to the water rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. There's also a pretty detailed presentation that we were intending to go through here, and my thought is, if it's okay with folks, I'll lead through the first few slides and then turn it over to the Water Superintendent. Is that acceptable, Madam Chair?
Of course.
And I'm gonna do my best to try to share my screen.
I'll hold up. Yeah, because my packet, it's, you can't, it's sideways in the packet, perfect.
So folks see a slide that says water update?
Yes.
Great. I'm gonna try to go quickly through this part. That's okay. So this is a description here of various steps that we have been reporting to the board over the past few years associated with our purchase of all of our water from the town of Andover. Starting up here and with the most recent developments, you're all familiar with the administrative consent order and subsequent state approval that we got to buy all of our water. You're aware that we have bid out, and we have, we're in the process of awarding contracts both for the chemical feed stations and for the associated water main improvements on North Street. There's also related, there's also, excuse me, independent water main work on Mount Vernon Street that we're going through the process of contracting for as well. On that, both of those water main projects scheduled to be done next construction season, but to be started at the beginning of next construction season. I'll just note that there are a couple of projects that we anticipate requesting funding for in the future. One is for water work on the northern area of Main Street between roughly Burrows Road and North Street. And then there's also a secondary area that we're calling Southern Main Street, which is further south along Main Street as well. And those are areas that have previously been identified for improvements and for which we will, we will be looking to try to take some of the contingency funding available for the scheduled North Street and chemical feed work and to dedicate it to the Northern Main Street project, but it may require a subsequent appropriation, which we expect to be submitted as part of the capital improvement planning process for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And this is just a quick graphic, so the areas in red are the projects for which we have funding in place right now. This is North Street going off of Main Street over to the Moose Hill Tank, which is up here, and then North Street over to Lowell Road as well. We're going with the construction of a twelve-inch main. You're, this board's familiar with the Main Street chemical feed location, which will be constructed, and there's also a central street location, which is just out of view, it looks like. There it is on the map. And so, just a quick update here, you're aware we have funding for this from a state grant to the Mass Works Program, as well as a town appropriation of three million dollars for this project. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a bit of a contingency we're working off of over a half a million dollars that we hope to be able to dedicate toward that Northern Main Street water main construction. This is a very quick overview of where we're at. We're going through the awarding of these contracts right now, and we're looking to get started in late first quarter, early second quarter of twenty twenty-one. This is the Mount Vernon Water Main. Those of you who have walked the parade route, you are familiar with the need to over on that street for repaving. And one of the things that has held up repaving has been the replacement of the, the water main, which is something that we are similarly looking to do as we mentioned up here in construction year twenty twenty-one. Again, we have independent funding for that through the annual water main appropriation, both for design and for construction. For this, we have a small contingency as well with some funding that's available as a balance unobligated, which again, may similarly be available for that North Main Street project that we identified with any difference being requested to the capital plan. Now, what the Main Street means, and I'm talking about here, again, the northern one is right here between Burrows and North Street. And again, the southern one, starting just north of Winter Street and going south, all the way south on Main Street. So the reason I just identify that along with these projects is that this is a capital rate, a capital hearing as well. We have funded the, we have sought and received funding for water distribution system upgrades, for replacing an excavator, an F three fifty pickup truck, and for some small capital that's in the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-one as well. Those, as the board knows, was approved, they were approved at the fiscal year twenty twenty-one town meeting held in June of twenty twenty. And so those funding sources are in place, but we are required under the bylaw to have a hearing on them, and so we've included them here. I'm gonna stop for just a moment. I just wanted to provide a quick update with regard to the capital projects. I think most folks are familiar with all of those projects, and if they aren't, I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Mark Clark, the Water Superintendent, for the actual rate hearing.
Do the members have any questions? I don't see any.
To the Water Superintendent and to Mr. Williamson, did I get everything correct in that, in my quick summary? Not to steal your thunder.
Excellent job.
Thank you for your efforts in putting that together, Mr. Williamson. With no questions, Madam Chair. Mark, are you okay to do the presentation, and shall I scroll through it on your behalf?
That'd be fine, sure.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is obviously the, the water rate hearing. Typically, we would hold our water rate hearings in the June timeframe. We did not do that this year. If we could go to that, there's a slideshow, just a table of the water rate history over the last ten years. I just wanted to point out, so we did, I think only Mr. O'Leary was on the board at the time, but back in FY eleven, we had a substantial rate increase in the middle of the year. We actually had a little issue setting the tax rate because the water rate, or the water enterprise was running in a deficit situation. We did have money elsewhere to offset that, but we had no town meeting authorization offset that. So DOR had us take a, a step to make sure we were gonna be solvent in the water fund. So we did, you can see at the top, we had a four percent rate increase at the start of FY eleven, nine percent in the middle of the year, and then eleven percent at the start of FY twelve. So fairly substantial, twenty-four percent rate increase over, actually, one year. Followed that up by a couple of years of no rate increase, a two and a half percent in FY fifteen. And then you see three years of substantial, and eight percent, a six percent, and a six percent in FY sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. That was when we were first starting to look at the MWRA. We had estimated that there'd be a, a need for about a forty percent rate increase over five years to go from what our current rates were in order to be at the, the rate we would need to pay the buy-in cost and begin paying the capital needs to connect to the MWRA. In FY eighteen, we really started looking hard at Andover again. We weren't really sure where we were going, so for the last two years and going into this year, we haven't done anything with the rates. So what happens if we generate additional money in the Water Department is typically we transfer it to the Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. And this is just a history of that fund showing back about eight years, going back to two thousand twelve. We had about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that fund. The bold numbers are the numbers, we have made transfers into that, we have ended each year in the positive, so we've transferred money into that fund each year of the past eight years. We have occasionally used that money, transferred out for small projects, engineering studies, typically some small capital, things that it didn't make sense to bond on the water rate. So we've, we've, as you can see, there are projects we've taken out. I just would make a note on the FY nineteen retained earnings and the temporary chlorine facility, those two numbers were actually combined together last year at June town meeting. So you actually saw a net three hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-three go into the fund. We actually had four hundred fifty-one thousand, but we had, as we constructed that temporary chlorine facility on Main Street, we had additional costs that we had no place in the budget to cover those costs. So money came out of the stabilization fund for that. I would just note, so those last two transfers, four hundred fifty-one thousand in FY nineteen, just under fifteen thousand dollars last year. That obviously raises a question, what's going on? What happened? And kind of look at the next slide to try to explain that. So we did generate retained earnings of four hundred fifty thousand dollars in FY nineteen. Going from FY nineteen into FY twenty, we did have increases within the budget. These are just expense increases. Debt service went up by about seventy-five thousand, personnel went up, indirect costs went up, and the budgeted cost to purchase water from Andover went up a hundred and twenty-five thousand. When you add up just those four line items, that's about two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars of increased expenses. So there was no water rate increase, our expenses went up by two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. You would expect that four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars would have been cut in half, basically, in FY twenty, just by the, the increase in expenses. As you're all familiar with, in early January, we tested for PFAS in December, got the results in early January. And upon consultation with Mass DEP, we shut our own wells off in early January, began purchasing a hundred percent of our water from Andover. May and June, as you may have heard me say in the past, we saw record-high water demands. I don't have a good explanation for that. May wasn't really a drought month, June started, really started the drought. But in June, we actually saw an increase of forty percent in our water demand in June compared to June of the year before. If you ever see a ten percent increase in a year-over-year water demand, that's huge. Seeing a forty percent increase was off the charts. And I talked to a number of other people in the industry, and pretty much everybody was seeing huge increases. We're calling it the COVID effect. We think that people are home, they may not have been able to take vacations. So rather than the money that they might have taken a vacation with, they used to do home improvements, one of the things they could do was, you know, water their grass. That did continue the rest of the summer as well. We saw much higher water demands the rest of the summer. But what that did to our costs was, we basically, you know, rather than the budgeted what amount was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the second half of the year, we should have spent about sixty thousand dollars more in Andover. We actually spent four hundred fifteen thousand dollars more for those last six months. So when you had the four hundred fifteen thousand dollars, half of the budgeted increase and the rest of it, it comes up to over five hundred thousand dollars in cost increases for FY twenty over FY nineteen. Now, we were able to save money in a few areas. We didn't have to buy chemicals, obviously, if we weren't treating water. We didn't use as much electricity because we're not pumping water from our own sources. So we didn't, you know, if the, the actual number I calculated out is five hundred eighty thousand dollars in increased costs. But that basically is where those retained earnings from FY twenty were lost. So we're a little bit in the black this year, not in a great situation. I wanted to kind of, so that's kind of looking backwards. Now, where are we this fiscal year? So the budget we submitted back last December was for, not for purchasing a hundred percent of our water from Andover in FY twenty-one. If you might have recalled in the past, I've said we wanted to phase that in, in over two years after we got our final permits. Basically, just wean off our own water, get through a couple of summers, make sure the system will operate properly without using our own sources. We kind of went cold turkey off our own sources in January. Back in February, we presented something that showed we expected the overage in the purchase of water line item to be about three hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's actually increased quite a bit because we purchased so much more water, such a high demand year. So this kind of minimum projected match, maximum projected are kind of worst-case and better-case scenarios here. So worst case, we're gonna buy half million dollars above our budgeted amount of water from Andover. The better case is that that number drops. There's a huge variation there still. I can't tell you what's gonna happen this May and June, if it's gonna repeat what happened last year, or if it's gonna be more of an average-type year. Again, I don't have a perfect explanation for why that level of increase happened. On the other side, back in February, we said we could expect to generate about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in savings within the budget between personnel, electric costs, chemical costs, not having to maintain and operate the treatment plants. Looking at it now, I'm projecting that number's actually gonna be about three hundred fifteen to about four hundred thousand dollars. So our budget, our, our actual budget approved at town meetings, about four point four six eight million dollars for the Water Department. That's everything, debt service, indirect costs, everything, purchase of water, personnel. If you take the overage in the Andover and subtract out those, the savings that's potentially there and add it to the budget, you come up with these adjusted budget and adjusted budget range. So on the worst-case scenario, our expenses are gonna total four point six five, five million dollars. On the better-case scenario, they're about four point five. Either way, we're over our FY twenty-one budget. We will have to come to town meeting in June and ask for, you know, an adjustment to the budget. That's, that's gonna be a given, just because we're only authorized at this point to spend that, that actual budgeted amount. Collections, because we've been selling water, we have, we're having a fairly good year of collections. Obviously, if it's the year that we were, we're selling the most water, we expect to collect pretty good, too. So projecting collections for the entire fiscal year works out to about four point six one five million dollars. That's independent of cost, so it's either way, it's the same number. If we take the adjusted budget and subtract out the, or take the projected collections and subtract out the adjusted budget, we come up with the potential of a negative about forty thousand dollar deficit. Or on the better-case scenario, we could actually be generating a hundred eleven thousand dollars in retained earnings. we could actually be generating $111,000 in retained earnings. So what does that mean? We're not looking to run a deficit situation, that's never a good situation. So I've shown what are the options, the options are basically we could do nothing, which is basically the 0% rate increase. Again, that gives us a potential deficit, and also, if things work to our advantage, we work out in a positive situation. And I've just shown incrementally what each half percent increase on the water rates applied to just the last six months billing for this year would do to that potential deficit or potential surplus. And you can, I hope you can see this, at about 2.5% is where we would break even, 2.5% generates just about that that $40,000 deficit. The other option is, I probably shouldn't include the Stickney Fund here because I don't know that the Stickney Fund can be used for this purpose, but we do have, as was noted above, we have about over two and three-quarter million dollars in our Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. My understanding of that is it can be used for two purposes. One would be for capital projects, so if we had something, a $2 million project, we didn't want to impact the rates at all. We could go to that fund, get authorization to borrow $2 million out of that fund to fund a capital project. The other thing it can be used for is offsetting the need for rate increases. I don't believe the Stickney Fund can be used to offset rate increases, but you, Stickney Fund could be used for capital projects as well, so you can see right now, we have about $2.9 million between those two funds. Before we get into a discussion, I did just want to kind of take a look at what am I projecting going forward? Again, I'm not sure why FY or calendar year 2020 was such a year of high water demand, it was a drought year, but it was way beyond anything we've seen in the past. I'll just make the comment that if it hadn't been such a high-demand year, this situation would be much worse. The potential deficit would be much greater and the potential for generating retained earnings would 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 be much less. I have no reason to expect that the coming summer will be the same. This was a drought year, I think we all heard about the deficit and rainfall. Generally, that doesn't happen two years in a row, we did see it back in 2016, summer of 2016. So that was four years ago, I know people think, oh, you're making the same statement every year. It has been four years since we've had a really dry summer. It is reasonable to expect that the costs related to water are going to go up. Andover, we're currently we can anticipate the Andover cost of water is going to go up 2.5% next year for us. We pay 95% of their tier-one rate, but we were in a deal where they can't increase our rate by more than 2.5% per year. Because of that, right now, we're paying about 91% of their tier-one rate, so even if they do no increase in Andover next year, we can anticipate a 2.5%, we still wouldn't hit that 95% of their tier-one rate at this point. Personnel costs due to contracts, indirect costs, that's the money the Water Department pays for the support that other departments give to us, those go up historically year-over-year. Supplies such as pipe, copper, fire hydrants also go up. So to project that there will be an increase on the order of about 2.5% per year just takes into account those things. If we had large capital projects that hit hit the the debt service, that can also impact the need for rate increases, so 2.5% is not what we're saying we need to do each year for the next five years, but it it's going to be on a minimum probably of that magnitude. Show a graph here, which is, it actually come, we started showing this in 2017 when we were talking about the difference between going to Andover versus going to MWR. And what it's showing, it's hard to read, but the the vertical axis says costs in million gallons or million dollars per year. And you can see where we are right now, we're in FY 21, our budget is just about $4.5 million, so it's right on where this chart was. What the lines on these charts do, they just show the the increase in cost due to the cost to purchase water. We had projected Andover rate would go up for us for about 2.5% per year. At the time, we put these projections together, looking backwards, they had actually gone up about 1.2% per year over the last 15 years before. But we figured 2.5% was probably a reasonable expectation going forward, both from what we'd seen and from our discussions with them. That's the blue line on the chart, the red line is MWR costs. And based on MWR statements and their history, we expected that to go up about 4% per year. So we are where we are, we didn't, we never said the rates were going to, there would be no increase in expenses, this this chart is pretty much what we were saying, the increases would be over time. And then there's been some question, well, wouldn't we have been better to go to MWR? And just the last slide I really want to show is a comparison, as I mentioned at the beginning, there were projections that we would need to go up about 40% in the MWR costs over the first five years of the project, and you can see that, that's the right-hand side of this this chart. If you go down to the fifth year, we're up at 42% over what we were. And then what have we actually done? We did an 8-6-6 the first three years, then decided let's hold off. If we were to do a number like 2.5%, which would basically wipe away the potential deficit this year, we would be at a cumulative rate increase of about 24%, so it, to me, this definitely tells us that we made the right decision, that the Andover alternative was kind of the the wiser alternative to go with. And I guess, I guess I would leave it there and then open it up to discussions and/or questions. We did meet with the Water Commission last Thursday night, and then, as I think in your packet was a recommendation from the Water Commission.
Well, the Water Commission recommended 2.5% increase.
Yes, that was the recommendation by our our board vote the other night.
Thanks, Mr. Bucci. Questions? Mr. O'Leary? Mr. O'Leary's doing calculations over there, trying to sort this out, you can see it.
I don't have to do calculations, I've been working with this for some of the years now, it's a matter of fact, I I spent a considerable amount of time with Mr. Gilberto and Mark over the last few days, since our last meeting, just going over, you know, what's happened with retained earnings and getting a better understanding as to why we're at, we're at. I think what's important for the the board to recognize is that those substantial increases that we consciously made in 2015, 16, 17 because of we were anticipating going with MWR was intentional and deliberate because we were looking to build up the the stabilization fund for rate stabilization purposes when we transferred over to the MWR, because the increases were going to be significant. And we didn't want to hit everybody with a 40% increase in one fell swoop, kind of ease people into it and then anticipate, you know, 4% or 5% increases per year if you went with MWR. Well, again, long story short, we went with Andover and the cost is significantly less, the cost is still there, and increases are going to come annually. But we have been able to build up our stabilization fund, as Mark pointed out, to about $2.7 million, which is substantial and good. Now, the question is, do we need all that money right now in the stabilization fund? One thing that we have to understand and recognize, remind ourselves, is that in the deal that we negotiated with Andover, we get favorable rates based upon what they charge their residential rates there, so we get 95% of whatever their most favorable rate is. But they still see rate increases every year, but at least we're paying the least amount per gallon of water than any other customer they have. But that being said, we also are getting a credit from the town of Andover to the tune of $950,000 over a 10-year period, so almost, you know, $80,000 a year credit, which is going to disappear in year 10, so we're going to have to absorb that somehow or another. And we need to look at that going forward, and what are we in now, year three, two or three? So seven years out, that credit of 80-plus thousand dollars a year is going to disappear, and we have to absorb that. So how do we want to do it, and how are we going to approach it? And so these are things that we have to consider, yes, we have $2.75 million sitting over here, available for capital projects or rate stabilization, but we don't want to give a false impression that our rates are not going to go up, because they are. You know, and to Mark's point, you know, 2.5% is a reasonable expectation looking forward, particularly based upon what we're currently paying Andover, which is less than the 95% we negotiated. So they can go up 2.5% on us a year maximum for the first 10 years. So that being said, we're not in a bad position, we have some money to stabilize the rates, it's just a question, let's not lose sight that we're also going to have to absorb that $80,000 a year plus in a short, short period of time, plus capital improvements we're going to be doing. So it seems to be, it was shocking, if you recall, you know, that we had ended up with retained earnings of just $15,000 in the current fiscal year or the past fiscal year from a $450,000 retained earning and $500,000 a year before, so basically, your retained earnings have dropped a million dollars in two years, you know, what happened? And again, the big thing was, we were looking to ease ourselves into Andover over a period of time, two or three years. We had a situation where we had to shut down our wells, and as Mark said, go to cold turkey to Andover would substantially increase that cost, which again eats into the retained earnings. There's no doubt, we're not selling money at a loss, you know, we sell water to our consumers here. We, we're not doing it at a loss, but we're just not making as much on it now, because we're not producing it. And we're buying from Andover, and those costs are escalating, and we're selling, we're buying more and selling more. So the delta is diminishing, and we need to catch up with that, so I feel comfortable in relation to the explanation as to why the retained earnings have dropped substantially over the last two years. And I also am cognizant of the fact that it wouldn't be realistic to have a zero rate increase because it's just going to come, catch up with us down the road, you know, in very short period of time. So I think what we need to do is be honest with our ratepayers here and tell them, you know, we can anticipate a 2.5% increase going forward. It's reasonable, it's easily explained in relation to the cost, and again, the variables in relation to drought situations and how much we sell and how much we buy is again, dependent upon the weather. So again, I appreciate Mark and town administrators spending the time with me over the last couple of weeks. And I personally am comfortable with what's being proposed.
And thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Anybody have questions? All set with the members, is there anyone attending that has any questions? I don't see any questions. Okay. So this is before, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Just, I was just going to make a comment, I, you know, I have 100% faith in the group that is leading this effort, and we should all, as a town, be very happy that previous efforts by previous boards really stuck to making the switch from MWR to Andover. We're reaping the rewards of that, so the increase we're facing is totally modest compared to what it could have been and for many, many decades to go, so I just think it's a fantastic job, you know, Mr. O'Leary, I know, worked on that. The late Bob Messeri worked on that. It was their diligence that helped make that happen, and the previous boards stuck to the guns and made it happen, so as a town, you know, we should all applaud all the good work that's been done here. And I stand behind whatever recommendation they make.
Thank you. Anything further? From anyone? Mr. Gilbert, this is on for our recommendation on the water rate?
So the vote would be to establish the water rate, that that authority lies with the select board. You have to recommend for the Water Commission.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Okay, so where, do I have, if there's no further discussion, and I see no other if you don't see any other questions or participation, is there a motion, Mr. Studel?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to, I move to approve a 2.5% increase in water use rates and to retain charges and fees at their current rates.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Studel, a second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I I realize a motion does not reflect this, but that would be for the period beginning January 1st, 2021. To be clear, there will not be any retroactive change in billing.
Thank you. Do you want that to be incorporated into the motion?
Corrected, that would be great, yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a 2.5% increase beginning January 1st, 2021 in water use rates and to retain charges and fees at their current rates. I'll second that again.
Okay.
Mr. Clark has to stand up.
So just in full transparency, I want everyone to understand, the last time we read meters was November 1st. The next time we'll read meters is February 1st. So effectively, any bill we issue after January 1st is what the new rates will be charged at. It's, it's impossible, you know, not to include that two-month period from November 1st to January 1st. I know this gets confusing, and it comes up every time we we increase, typically, we increase the rates July 1st. What it does is it effectively captures from the last time we billed, which typically is May 1st. So I want to make sure everybody's clear on that, and I'm not back billing people incorrectly.
Want to amend the motion again?
No, you already said it, said it the right way. You already said it the right way, and it was seconded.
Mr. Clark is correcting a comment I made about it being retroactive, and so when I said that, I meant billing, not water use. So thank you for clarifying.
So we're all right with the January 1st date, not from the previous reading?
We could say that bill issued after January 1st, 2021. If we wanted to be crystal clear.
You are going to amend it, as I mentioned. Three times a check.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a 2.5% increase beginning with the billing date of February 1st and beginning with a reading period of November 1st, 2020 in water use rates and to retain charges and fees at their current rates.
Second.
Mr. Clark, does that work for you?
That'll work for me, yeah, I can do that.
So I have a motion by Mr. Studel and a second, this time by Mr. Gilberto.
I beat Mr. O'Leary to it.
And did any further discussion from my colleagues?
There's an echo.
There's a terrible echo.
Madam Chair, shall I mute all?
Sure, if you want, if you want, we can unmute yourself.
Okay, I've muted everybody.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion from my colleagues, I would just like to say from the chair that it it may seem as though we are, you know, indiscriminately increasing water rates, and I think we probably it probably would have been a wise course to have it, have this even in a smaller, smaller incremental increases, I think we were obviously thrilled with the work that was done and understood by connecting with Andover, what a significant benefit that was for us as a town financially, but as was explained, I we certainly didn't anticipate having to go, you know, by all the water all of a sudden, like Mr. Clark explained, but I also think it's good for us to be, you know, steadily looking at this annually rather than 2.5 could have been 0.5 or, you know, 1.5 versus 2.5, especially right now where people are in difficult economic circumstance, while it may seem like it was an easy decision to come to, it's a, it's a group, a whole team of people looking at this, trying to sort it through, trying to figure out what's the best for the town, and some of these these decisions that we have to make are inevitable, even in these difficult financial times for people, so while I think it's, while I think Mr. Clark's suggestion to go to those other two available sources are, they're great thinking outside available sources are, they're great thinking outside of what we know is the inevitability of a rate increase. I also think that we should keep those in place for the things that we know we're going to need to spend them on and, uh, just kind of move forward with a consistent uh, review of this annually to see, do we need to increase it at point five, one point, you know? Now we're at two point five when perhaps we could have, we could have, um, kept it on a track so that we weren't facing this. Although some of it, like Mr. Clark said, was unpredictable. So that being said, anybody else? Mr. O'Leary, go ahead. You unmuted yourself.
I have unmuted myself. Yeah. Just, again, that two point seven million dollars we have, again, we should be looking at that as, um, again, it was for rate stabilization in the case of the MWRH, which isn't going to be needed. You know, we need to have some sort of dollar amount there. I don't think it needs to be that dollar amount. So I think there's going to be a lot of discussion moving forward as to, you know, what should those retained earnings, the reserve funds be at? And once that's determined, then we can use those monies for one-time expenditures. So we don't have to bond and then have a true rate moving forward rather than a masked rate, which will then catch up with us, you know, in year twelve, fourteen, or whatever it's going to be. So again, uh, it's a good thing we had the money. It's a good thing it's there. It was a wise move on our part and the previous board's parts the last several years to do that. Uh, so we're in a pretty good position. So, but again, I think we need to look at what the number should be and then determine how we're going to spend it on capital projects.
Right. And making sure we're forecasting like this, you know, like Mr. Clark did for us and like the team did for us. Making sure we're on top of that forecasting. And we did, we did know in that agreement and I do recall it was, it was going to be up to the two point five percent anyway. So that was something that was part of that, that, uh, contract. So we didn't know that automatically. So that was going to happen if they increased their rate. So. All right. So that, if there's no further discussion here, we have a motion and a second. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Studel.
Aye.
Okay. I think it's coming from you, Mrs. Gonzalez. The echo. There we go. So thank you to, uh, uh, the team that is here, that sat here and handed it over and gave us the explanation and we'll be seeing you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. For, um, the next order of business is a wa- a wastewater update. Oh, yeah, we're going to see you right now, actually. So, um, Mr. Gilberto. And Mr. Depp, sticking with us and Mr. Clark sticking with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so we similarly have a PowerPoint presentation that was placed in your meeting packet for this evening's meeting relative to water infrastructure. And I do believe that, um, we have representatives of Wright Pierce on with us still. Mike Stein, are you on there still?
Yes, this is Mike Stein.
And I, I know the hour is late, so thank you very much for, uh, for sticking with us. You know, you, we appreciate the effort you put into this, uh, update with regard to wastewater. Um, I'd be happy to operate the screen if perhaps you could take us through it.
Okay. Um, so you'll share your screen?
I will share my screen if that, if that's easier for you. If you would rather share yours, that's fine too.
Nope. Uh, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Okay. So my name is Mike Stein. I'm with Wright Pierce Engineers and this is the progress update for the wastewater, uh, alternative projects. The overview of this presentation, I'll talk briefly about the study area, then I'll talk about in-town feasibility. And then I'll talk about the out-of-town conveyance and improvements evaluation. This map here depicts the potential sewer areas. Uh, you can see, uh, first of all, north is to the right of the page, to the right of the screen. So you can see the, this includes Main Street, down the Park Street, over to Concord Street. Residential areas west of Main Street, uh, North Street going out to Lowell Street area and also around Martins Pond. So for a project of this size to be sized, to be viable, there needs to be an initial revenue stream. So the sewer area was refined, uh, to maximize the revenue stream, uh, to concentrate in the business commercial areas on Main Street, Concord Street to support business development, and then going out North Street to pick up Lowell Street where there is a high concentration of residential users. Next slide. As I said, the area was refined, uh, to mainly concentrate in the business commercial areas and areas to support business development. This study included to identify the needed infrastructure. We obviously know that we need gravity sewer pipe, but also, uh, we're going to need, uh, several pump stations and enforcements. And then lastly, there, of course, there's got to be a financial aspect. How much will it cost? What, what are the costs? We also considered, uh, should the project be phased, phased in the less than the bite of the cost? And to spread it out over a period of time or just doing, do it in, in one shot? And then how to pay for it? How's this project going to be paid for? The entire community will, will share the cost upfront and as users are connected to, to the sewer system, the community share of the cost will diminish over time. And then lastly, to complete the financial, this financial exercise, we need to understand what the out-of-town costs will be to transport the wastewater generated in North Reading to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. So this leads us into the next slide and what are out-of-town improvements. So this is the map of, of North Reading, uh, excuse me, uh, map of Andover. And all the wastewater generated in Andover goes to a pump station called the Shaw Sheen Village Pump Station. And that gets pumped to an interceptor which flows to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District, uh, for treatment. So you can see on the far right-hand side of that map, there's a green square right at the edge of the map. And that is GLSD, Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. So you'll see four connections on this map. Connection one is, is, is the orange line. And that is obviously the longest connection two is, is, is the yellow line. Going up Main Street from, uh, from North Reading. Uh, connection three is the green line, which, um, is going up the Route one twenty-five bypass towards North Andover. And then connection four is the blue line. And that also goes up one twenty-five, uh, to one fourteen. And that bypasses the Andover collection system and goes directly to the interceptor on the other side of, uh, four ninety-five in back of the movie theaters. So moving on to slide seven. Or the next slide. So of these four connections, you'll see that, that, uh, connection two is the shortest. Uh, so they range in length from, from just a little bit over five and a half miles to just about nine miles. And the total project cost range anywhere on the low end from twenty-one million to the high end of forty-six million. And the construction cost per linear foot, you'll see in the far right-hand column ranges anywhere from four hundred and fifty dollars per linear foot to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, next slide. So with these four connections, we need to keep in mind that no matter what connection is ultimately, um, selected, um, all of them will involve coordination with the Mass DOT since some portion of the project be, will be within a state right of way. Connection one is the longest and that will require upgrades to the existing sewer system in Andover. That North Reading will have to participate in cost sharing. And also North Reading will be subject to user fees, um, O and M operation maintenance fees for the use of the Andover's wastewater infrastructure. Similar to, uh, connection one is, is connection two, although connection two is the, the shortest route, which goes up Main Street. Um, but because of the continuing street reconstruction projects in the downtown area due to the gas main replacement and the town picking, piggyback on water main replacement, this can, this connection is pretty much off the table for the time being. So because connection two, uh, appears to be pretty much off the table, we started to look at connection three and four, which more or less, um, skirts around the downtown area similar to, to connection one. So connection three, as you saw on the map previously, goes up one twenty-five there to Route one fourteen and back in the Andover down Haverhill Street where it eventually connects up to the, uh, pump station, which pumps to GLSD. But connection four, um, goes up one twenty-five to one fourteen, as I explained before, and connects up to the interceptor in a GLSD behind the movie theaters on the side of one forty-five. But this connection, connection four, this is, this is an option looking out ten years, um, if not beyond, since Route one fourteen has had several resurfacing projects completed and they are scheduled for more, plus the fact, uh, there is a reconstruction project, which is slated for one fourteen, which is to begin in early twenty twenty-three. Uh, next slide. So as far as preliminary costs, uh, and, and schedule, and, and these costs include, you know, all, all in-town costs, uh, all the out-of-town improvements needed. Uh, there's an inflow reduction fee in, and there's actual connection fee to the GLSD. Back in two thousand eighteen of April, two thousand eighteen, it was stated as, is one hundred and thirty-five million to two hundred and four million. Since April, two thousand eighteen, we've, we've done more work and able to refine that cost um, a little bit better. Right now it's looking at, we're between a hundred million to a hundred and twenty-five million. And lastly, everyone asks, uh, what is the schedule, uh, for, for this project? And that, that's a great question, but, but what, what we can tell you, if in, in a perfect world, if, if there is such a thing, uh, if all the stars are lined up and that, uh, we're probably looking between six to eight years, if not a tad longer, maybe even ten years uh, for, uh, project completion for when, um, a drop of wastewater that's generated in North Reading will end up for treatment at the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. And with that, that's, that was a very brief, uh, progress update on the wastewater projects.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Uh, Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, just comments. Uh, I think it's important for the board to recognize that if you go back to the other map, Michael Gilberto, on the different, four different routes, the original route that we were talking about with Andover is the orange route, which is actually one of the longest routes, uh, which goes up, uh, just over the line in Andover, up Rattlesnake Hill Road, and then all up through Ballad Vale and then connects down behind the center of, um, goes around the center of Andover and connects to the Shaw Sheen area. Uh, that was the first route that we had contemplated and talked with, with Andover. The, the Main Street route, um, was obviously the most direct route that we would consider, you know, like, like to have considered. And then, you know, but didn't turn out to be, say, the most palatable, you know, for the town of Andover in this whole, the situation with the gas pipeline explosion and the reconstruction of Route twenty-eight in the downtown area there, um, creates some more problems for us in relation to that. And I think Mike Stein, you can back me up here. When we talk about, uh, uh, state highways, you know, reconstruction, major reconstruction, they generally don't like to reopen the roads for about a ten-year period, once they dig them all up. So
That is correct.
So we've got that problem in the Andover center area and then we have the problem on Route one fourteen and which would be option number four. Uh, basically in front of Merrimack College, if you go up one twenty-five, you take a left on one fourteen for the Merrimack College all the way down to the Market Basket Plaza, pass, pass it at four ninety-five is where we would tie in uh, with the interceptor to go to Greater Lawrence Sewer. Again, it's a, it's a good option to be considering. However, they're in the midst of twenty-five percent right now of the planning stages for reconstruction on Route one fourteen. And again, that option of going down one fourteen in front of, uh, Merrimack College may not be available to us for, for a decade. But again, depending upon how the timelines go and how far we progress and whether we get the support of the community to, to move forward, uh, is certainly going to drive the timeline. So again, uh, Andover has been cooperative in working with us, uh, late in relation to, you know, which options. They haven't ruled out any options in assisting us. Uh, but again, it's important for us to, to recognize these are the, the options that we may have available to us. And then we want to look at, you know, what are the, uh, operating and maintenance costs moving forward? And do we want to be tied to their infrastructure and their plans? Or do we want to go our own Route one twenty-five and basically be the owner of all the property there, which would be good. So again, uh, we're not looking for any, um, decision by the board because again, this is very preliminary as to, but, uh, we thought it was important to give the board and the community an update as to, you know, what are we looking at? What are we considering? What do we anticipate the cost to be based upon the latest information that we have? And what's the realistic timeline as far as an expectation? And again, in the perfect world, you were just given that, that timeline. But, uh, but there's still a lot more work to do, a lot more conversations to have with the state, the town of North Andover, town of Andover. And again, internally here as to what we think we can afford and when we can afford it.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner?
Yeah. So, um, what I saw for a price range was a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million. I think that's what I saw on that slide. And so I guess, um, at some point, I think it's next, yeah, it's right there. So the hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million. I guess, um, I don't know if it's too early to even ask the question, but it, and I don't, I have absolutely no idea what the numbers are. But i- if we were to look at a similar town that had a single, uh, similar profile as us and they already had existing sewer in there, like, does the tax rate, does the taxes, does, does the, uh, fees coming from the owners of, on the pipes in effect pay for it? I mean, will it be able to afford it? And I don't even know how to, I'm not framing the question right, but basically what's the ROI? And is it realistic for our town based on the, um, on the path you've laid out, the, the, the lesser path? Is it realistic for our town to imagine we're going to be able to actually, uh, pay for that if everybody hooks up? And that's not a question I expect tonight. I'm just wondering if that can be something that can be provided to us some point in the future. And that's not a question I expect tonight. I'm just wondering if that can be something that can be provided to us some point in the future, so we get a ballpark. Or when I might be available, if it's even even available at this point.
Yes, that's a great question. And and that is part of the the work that we we are doing. Is is how to make this affordable or can it e- even be affordable?
And so just something that you're gonna you're gonna be looking at?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Yep, it is. It is going to be something that will be covered in in the first phase study.
Okay, I'm sure.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
So I'm sorry if I'm making folks dizzy by searching on my computer while we're live here.
Who is doing that? That's you controlling them.
So we, I have on my screen here, this is an executive summary of a report that was done for the town. I think seven or eight years ago by FXM Associates, which did conduct the type of analysis that you referred to, Mr. Wallner. Part of the the charge for the ongoing planning effort with Wright Pierce is to try to build off of this. I I don't want to say update it because they're not going to do the in depth parcel by parcel work. But I think the the thinking is that there are some, there's information in this study that if we were to. Build off of it, we could get a better understanding of where there may be some value and what the value amounts would be for the investment. And that's obviously designed to put us in a position financially to advance the project. So yes, there will be more to come with regard to the financial component of this. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if we're if we're in the, you know, I mean, if we're. Benchmark wise comparable to other communities that have already gone through this, you know, then great. But if we're really just outside of reality, I guess we should know that sooner than later. If we can even nail it down. I I'm familiar with this study and I don't remember it being very impressive, but I, you know, I don't, I, it's a very complicated issue. So I don't even want to draw any conclusions based on this study. It's really new numbers and a new way of looking at things. So I appreciate, I would appreciate in the future, when we have the time to know more about that, as I think everybody would want to know.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Think you might be muted. You're muted. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Studo?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Stein, I do have a couple of questions. If you go back to that map of, I'm sorry, Mrs. Mrs. Gonzalez, can you mute your, can you mute? You're muted, okay. If you can go back to that map with all the different colored lines, the different pathways, the four pathways. Yes, and now I I know nothing about sewer infrastructure, certainly haven't given it the investment of time that Mr. Gilberto and. Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo have been given this. But if we're talking about the reduced. Reduced plan to put sewer through Main Street and Concord Street, and let's say we go with connection number four. How how are businesses along Main Street going to tie into that? All the way, you know, along a completely different pathway? I don't understand what what I'm looking at here. So if you could explain it to me, like. Sewer infrastructure one oh one, that would, I think, help me understand why that's a feasible. Pathway to getting the businesses and residences along twenty eight connected. Through, let's say, connection three or connection four, even connection one for that matter.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
Do you understand what I'm asking you?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to answer it and and I and I think I know exactly what you want. So so what what you're looking at in this map is just the sewer infrastructure within. The town of Andover to get the wastewater generated in North Reading to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. So so in North Reading itself, they'll, for example, on Main Street, there will be a a sewer system. There'll be a pipe with a combination of a couple pump stations and enforcement. That.
The way you are directing it is going to come right through twenty eight and up through Concord. So does the cost that you're quoting for this? Include that infrastructure or just the infrastructure on one of these four pathways? Were those? So you wrote your next slide, the next slide that you added the estimates?
Right, so so the cost from a hundred million to a hundred twenty five million includes all the sewer infrastructure. Within the town of North Reading and the sewer improvements in Andover. To get the wastewater to Greater Lawrence Sanitary District.
Okay, so in that's including both and those connections that you're showing, those four pathways, those are existing. So does the cost also? Would, does the cost require us to expand what's existing? And does that require more permitting that than what we were currently seeking or? Possibly, you know, we're talking about seeking for this particular. Infrastructure.
Actually, I'll I'll backtrack here for a bit. When it comes to utilizing the most available infrastructure, you're looking at connection one. Okay. Connection two is a force main going up Route twenty eight. Main Main Street into Andover about halfway and then connecting up to the Andover existing collection system. Connection three and connection four, for example, connection four is all brand new pipe. We're not utilizing any. Existing infrastructure just because there there isn't any for for like for that connection for root. But for connection three, it's it's very similar. It's mostly all new construction. Until we get to Haverhill Street in Andover, where we connect up to existing sewer infrastructure within Andover.
So for all of these pathways, the first, it looks like connection one is. It looks like you, you know, you said connection two is all but rejected, right? So you are focusing on three and four?
Nope, one, connection one is still a viable option. Can connection three is still a viable option. Connection four, just due to the. The mass DOT work out there on one fourteen in the moratorium that they have, you know, that you can't excavate for. For such a long period of time after projects are done, that pretty much rules out connection number four.
Okay. Okay, so then, so three and four don't exist, we would put them in. So my last question to you is. Where those are, which if four is ruled out, we're pretty much looking at three, sounds like one or three. Does does, it looks like three and four are going into the two other communities versus just staying all straight through Andover. So do we have to do additional permitting requirements or permissions or other things? Getting those two communities to agree? I know we already have to get the approval to go through the Great Lawrence Sewer District. But does that involve additional permitting and is that also incorporated into your estimates?
Uh, it it involves. Involve it, we we don't have to involve additional entities just because we are within a state right away. So it's all coordination and permitting with the mass DOT.
Okay.
Even though, even though we are going through North Reading, I mean, we've already talked with with North Reading. And and they have even said that, you know, look, it's as a town, as a town, excuse me, the town of North Andover. That, you know, we have no jurisdiction in that road. It's strictly mass DOT. So so that's that's who we have to coordinate with. And and for connection three or four, we'll be coordinating with the mass DOT anyway. Just going up Route one twenty five from the North Reading Andover Town Line.
Okay, thank you. All right. I really appreciate this. This is so so helpful, I think, to at least given us an understanding of. What was explained the other day and what you're looking at and what you're trying to work on, knowing this is a preliminary review. Excellent. So if there's no, there aren't any other questions, anybody else? I see the chair, the school committee chair over there. So I, you came on, you your picture came on, so I figured you might ask questions. So please, Chairman Buckley.
Well, I almost made it through a meeting without saying anything. I can't do that.
That's becoming a pattern, Mr. Studo.
I just.
Almost a habit.
I I just had one question and the estimate went from one hundred and thirty five to two hundred and four million. Two years ago to when it was tightened a little bit down to one hundred to one twenty five. And it seems like a pretty significant reduction, especially in the high end of that. And I'm just wondering what caused it to drop so so substantially? And I just want to make sure that that it is all inclusive and that we're not just saying you need to fit within this budget. And then later on, we're going to be dealing with it over what we are expecting.
Great question. From from April two thousand eighteen to to today. We've learned a lot more about what what we're going to be doing in North Reading or what our options about. Are available that we're going to be doing in North Reading. And we learn a lot more about the infrastructure. Within within the town of Andover as well.
And let me, let me add as well. So the first estimates were done. They were, this is Rob Williamson speaking from Wright Pierce two, Mike on this. The first estimates were based on that the orange route on the map, which was the the longest route. And that route was developed. For lack of a better term, in complete isolation without any input from Andover whatsoever. It was, it was, this was all planned out during the the DEIR phase and we were unable to engage them at the time. So it was based on some limited information that they were able to provide us, but they didn't want to really get to. Engaged in the process because they weren't quite sure what it was, where it was going to go. So those numbers were at the time, those very first numbers generated were quite conservative, not knowing. Very much at all about Andover's system. And then as the negotiations with Andover advanced. And we were be able able to get more refinement of what their system consisted of and develop these other three routes. That's what really led to us being able to refine the numbers. And such, and then as such, the significant drops in the cost. And Steve wants to add to this as well. Yeah, I think it's important to, Michael Gilberto, if you could scroll back down to the North Reading original map. The other way.
Yeah, because you changed the scope.
What changed the scope was, we were originally talking about, we were talking about Martins Pond area and then Burdette Road, Eames Street area connecting into. And we're also looking at the financial aspect in relation to the cost of putting in that infrastructure and the return on that investment with the users. Helping it pay for it. Well, a single family house user is very different than a apartment building or a condo complex or an industrial complex. So that's why we scaled back the scope of the infrastructure development in North Reading, which also significantly reduced the cost. Because if you go to the next slide, all we're looking at now primarily is just Main Street, North Street, Park and Concord Street. Because that will give us the most bang for our buck. And again, everything that's being proposed to be built here will allow for an expansion of the sewer system. Into these other areas at a later date, once the finances starts to generate enough income to support itself, rather than the taxpayers doing it all at once. And carrying the whole cost. So between that and then as Rob and Mike pointed out, you know, I bet the back of the envelope guess up in Andover was around twenty six million dollars. With limited information from Andover. And again, we've been able to refine those figures a little bit more. So that those costs have gone up a bit. And our infrastructure costs in North Reading based upon, you know, what we're proposing here is significantly less as far as infrastructure. So that's why, that's why you see the big drop from two hundred and four down to a hundred and twenty five million. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rob. Yep, nope, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Just just one additional question. Are we gonna, I remember from before we had. I had heard that if we started doing this project, that the state DEP might force us to do something around the Martins Pond area. Simply because we're going to be there. Are we still seeing that as a risk or is that just something that we really can put off to a face two or face three?
No, not at all. Their their attitude and appetite for seeing promoting economic development. Outweighs the necessity for what they used to be telling us for decades now. Is that, you know, we had to, from a public health standpoint, address the Martins Pond area first in order to make it work. And that made it economically unfeasible. That's why we were never able to move forward, you know, in past decades. So the change in attitude from the state standpoint. I think they'd rather see you do some infrastructure now with the ability to expand into those areas and address them later on. But there hasn't been any discussion with them where there's been a catch, caveat that we had to do that at any specific timeline or date, which is a good thing.
Yep.
But there would still be the potential down the line, like you said.
Yeah, and then again, all the.
This this, when the way this is marked, I think is.
And again, all the pump stations along the way would also take an additional infrastructure being built out and get it up to the Great Lawrence.
That's. Yeah. That's incorporated in right now into the into those estimates. So all that's factored in as best as can be factored into an estimate.
Correct.
So we're definitely going to need some help. We're going to need help paying for this. So. That is, I think, is there anyone else that has any questions? That's great. A picture is worth a thousand words. That that helps explain it in a way that I couldn't comprehend when we were just talking about it. So thank you for the presentation. Okay, any any other comment, question? We're all set. Thank you for your help and sticking with us for this late. It's almost eleven. Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks for having us. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself from the next order of business and ask the vice chair to take over the meeting. Because I there, I have a family member that works at the establishment. So.
Take it away, Mrs. Gonzalez. So is my voice okay? Were you guys getting feedback from me?
Still a little, but nothing, not as bad.
Not as bad? Okay.
When you talk.
All right, so we have an application for amendment, change of doing business. Do we have? James Dietz, is he here?
Yep, I'm right here.
The licensee is requesting to change the do, doing business as name. The application as well as a recent media release aren't closed. We've got, so go ahead.
You talking to me?
Yeah, is this?
This is Jim Dietz, yes.
Yes.
So we are applying for a DBA move change from Dos Lobos to Apothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen. We are applying for a brewer's license. And that process entails us to first apply for a federal stamp or a tax stamp. So in the process, there's about 12 steps to apply for this, put a brewery together. And the first step is to apply for a TTP, which stands for Tax Trade Bureau, licensing from the federal government. Then the next step from that would be to apply to the ABCC, the state of Massachusetts, for a pub brewers license. So we're looking, the application for the federal stamp requires us to change DBA. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair. I should say, Madam Vice Chair, excuse me. Mr. Dietz, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez mentioned that there is a, a media release that we had come across and some of us had seen here in town. So I provided it to the board, and it does speak to the future for the, the establishment, the incorporation of the brewery. And so I, right now, what you've come before us with an application that I would guess classify as a straightforward change as doing business as at this stage, is there any anticipated change with regard to the interest in the license or otherwise when the merger is completed?
So the, the corporation stays the same. It's Dos Lobos LLC. We're, we're taking on partners to that corporation. And the partners are all on the federal tax stamp application. And we will be just submitting that to federal application, and that's the next step for us in the process.
Do you anticipate, assuming approval at the federal level, coming back with a change of beneficial interest in Dos Lobos LLC?
So myself and Jim Dietz Jr. also are going to have 50% ownership. And we have 50% ownership going to the new partners coming in.
And that, that's an application we should expect to see at some point when the permitting requires it?
Correct.
Okay, so do you have a timeline for that at this point, Mr. Dietz?
So we have a site plan review slated for the January Water Selects meeting. And that will give us our permitting, and that'll give us our, our site plan review. And at that point, we're not changing the corporation of bringing the partners on until we start the construction. And as soon as we start construction, that's when we bring the partners on. So everything is preliminary until that point.
Okay, and Mr. Dietz, you mentioned site plan review. Is that with the, the planning commission? You had said select board, but I think it's the planning.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So is a site plan review is for the property itself and the work it was to do there?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. That answers my questions, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
Anybody else have questions? Mr. O'Leary?
I don't have any questions, just comments. I think it's an interesting concept and resting times, taking the risk associated with the changing what the venue is going to be. And I look forward to seeing what the site plan review brings us and what you're looking to do going forward. So I assume that you'll be back before the board at some point.
Yes, we will.
I look forward to support your efforts. So good for you.
Great. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary.
Anyone else? I'd like to add, it also sounds very exciting. It sounds like it'll be a great addition to town. Are, is this, does this have to do with the Wilmington Brewery?
There is no brewery in you know, there's a home brewery that we're partnering up with. And they, they are based in Wilmington, but there's no brewery out there. There's no functioning brewery now. There's a, there's basically a test kitchen done. We get a recipe, that's where we're getting our recipes.
Okay.
So we've been brewing for a number of years, establishing recipes, and now we've got to extrapolate them out for bigger sizes, not from the product room now. There's actually an engineer, I'm learning so much about this, there's actually an engineer that actually extrapolates those recipes from a 15 gallon to a 200 gallon, because it's not one for one all the time.
It might get some volatility in criticating it.
So are we?
It's very exciting. We're very, we're very excited about it. Our partners are tremendous brewers and tremendous business people and members of the community. And they're very excited. Steve is actually here. One of our partners.
Hi, everyone. I'm a North Reading native. My parents still live in town. I live five minutes over the border in North Wilmington. I'm a pharmacist at Brigham Women's Hospital in Boston, but have a pension for craft beer. And I built a home brewery within the limits of federal and state regulations on, on home brewing. And we pitched an idea to the Dietz in September 2019, and it's gotten far enough now where we're applying for federal license. And that's what this visit with you guys is, is to, to change the DBA so that we can apply for our federal license as we move forward.
All right, very exciting. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve a change of DBA for Dos Lobos LLC from Apothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen. Second.
You say that again?
Apothecary.
Apothecary, yep. It's hard for everybody to say.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second from Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Gonzalez is aye.
Mrs. Manupalli is abstaining.
Mrs. Manupalli is abstained.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you. I thank you for your time.
Thanks for hanging out.
Yes, thank you.
And I will turn it back over to Mrs. Manupalli.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Okay, the next order of business is accept a donation for the fire department. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, thank you. You have, in your packet of memorandum from Fire Chief Don Stats, with regard to this donation, which is being offered in the amount of $1,000 by Art Grossman, a resident of town. He wished to make a donation to the fire department, contacted the chief several times. As the chief states, he attempted to dissuade Mr. Grossman, but Mr. Grossman was insistent, and we greatly appreciate his commitment to the department and his willingness to make a contribution. We were happy to recommend to you that the board accept this donation that would go into a gift account for the fire department to be used for a need to be identified in the future. And we again greatly appreciate Mr. Grossman stepping forward and making this contribution. Mr. Grossman spoke of incident that happened at the library going back a year or so, in which he witnessed the response of the fire department and how it certainly made an impression on him in what he, you know, what, what occurred. And expressed his gratitude, and we thank him for, for the donation. We took, we're able, unfortunately, because of the social distancing requirements, we had a very small photographic opportunity a couple of weeks ago where we were able to take a picture with Mr. Grossman, socially distanced, of course. For folks, we appreciate that opportunity as well. And we recommend the board vote to accept the donation.
Thank you. That's wonderful. This is, this is some good stuff. So do we have a motion, first of all?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the donation from Arthur Grossman for the North Reading Fire Department.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner? Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Manupalli is aye. And any comments? Comments from the members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. And, you know, again, people have a great appreciation for the fire department, but when they step forward and make a donation in order to assist in the purchasing of equipment and things, it's even, even greater recognition and acknowledgement, it's greatly appreciated.
Definitely, especially even right now in these times when people are it's wonderful for someone to be, to step forward and do this. So thank you for the donation. Okay, next order of business. License renewals. And I think I'm recusing myself for this one, too, if we're doing them. And I think I have to recuse from this one. So, Madam?
None of them, just all of them? Okay, Madam Chair, or just?
Madam Chair, through you to the board members. So we had indicated we were placing.
I thought they were all together, Mr. Gilberto. I didn't see a motion in there, but I thought that they were going to be approved altogether.
I wish that we could, Madam Chair, because it would certainly streamline the discussion. There are several motions that were added during the day today. It's a motion in the folder for the meeting, separate from the main meeting packet. Fortunately, Jane and Karen were able to get them into a single document. So there is one entitled licenses, and there's a second one entitled appointments. But there are multiple motions within those, those two documents. So you have the vote. Thank you.
So I don't, I don't see those in the packet, but I'm gonna, I would have to recuse myself from Dos, Dos Lobos and Heavenly Donuts. Dos Lobos and Heavenly Donuts. I have a motivated child.
I think you're good. You're good for tonight.
Yeah, you're good. Neither of them are on it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I got a little confused because I, I thought that we were doing these all together. So, all right. We can't. We have to take them one by one. Is that what you're telling me?
Unfortunately.
It should be its own meeting night. All right. Mr. Studo, do we have a, we have several motions.
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common and particular licenses to expire December 31, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements for Andrea's House of Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donuts, McDonald's Restaurant, Starbucks Coffee, The Hornet's Nest. Second.
I have a motion and a second motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class one licenses to expire January 1, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duck, Duck Hack. I don't even, I hope I said that right. DBA National Sales. Thank you. Melikan Subaru North Reading Motorsports.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a
Okay, Madam Chair, now this has been seconded. Please, as the record show, that I will be recusing myself from class one and class two license renewals. I have a family member that holds a class two license. All class one licenses automatically get a class two with it. So therefore, I will be recusing myself. I will not be participating in the discussion mode, and I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Okay, I have a motion, but I wish you'd do a second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye, and Mr. O'Leary abstain, abstains. Next motion?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January 1, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A&amp;J Auto, Brian Duscheck, DBA National Sales. Nika Eng, DBA Route 28 Motors, P&amp;T Auto Sales, Inc.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye, and Mr. O'Leary abstain.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class three license to expire January 1, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duscheck, DBA National Sales.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye, and Mr. O'Leary abstain.
So Mr. O'Leary can vote. Mr. O'Leary votes aye.
Sorry, Mr. O, it is 11 o'clock, folks. Sorry. We sort of lose our steam. I would, I'm going to peg it at about 10:25. We start to lose our steam. All right, guys. Mr. O'Leary did not abstain. That's a unanimous vote. Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements for Andrea's House of Pizza. Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements, East Gate Liquors. Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements, convenience plus. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manupalli is aye.
Yeah. That's it for those.
Next order of business is Madam Chair, point.
And Madam Chair, if I can ask Mike a question. The ones in the share folder are the ones that have more than the ones that were in the packets, so I'm going to go by those ones, correct?
Oh, yep. Let's make sure we don't miss any.
Right, there's only two in the, there's only two in the packet, so.
Oh, there's a, there's a bunch more in the updated one. So I'll just use that. Well, power through, power through.
Yes, that's correct. You're right.
All right.
Want me to start?
Yes, please. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment, appointment as members of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for terms to run concurrent with their elected terms. Catherine Manu Pelley through May 2021, Leanne Gonzalez through May 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following, okay, I don't have the person's name. So-
You don't, I can talk to that. The next, the next order of business is, it is an appointment to the, the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I thought I was here yesterday about this at length, and I'd like the board to, I'd like the, I'd actually like the board to appoint me to be able to serve on behalf of the board. It overlaps with some of the responsibilities that Marty working on, actually, with the board. They haven't met in a while, the chair said, but as things begin to heat up again, they're going to be starting to, to move forward with some things that are going to be time sensitive. So it's on the, it's on the agenda for the board person that, if you recall, well, some of you weren't here, actually. Well, I don't think some of you were here when we did the makeup of this committee, but the board wanted representation to serve on that committee, and they were moving, moving forward with planning matters.
Okay.
That's why it's on the agenda. I think Mr. Gilberto was concerned to make sure that, that we had a designate from this board to be able to take part in those, to take part.
So I'll just, just if I can comment.
Mr. Walner?
There's been a number of meetings that have already occurred with the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I think Andy was our crucial appointment before. I sat in with many of those meetings as well. So if you want to be our official appointee, that's great. I think I have a great interest in continuing to attend those meetings and participating any way I can. So, you know, there's no objection on your part. I think that would make a lot of sense. It ties into everything I'm working on as well. And I think I have something to offer there. And also, the consultants of the Winter Street and the Main Street projects are in consult with the Facilities Master Planning consult. So there's a, there's a direct connection to things that are already being in process. So anyways, just fun to make that comment.
Thanks, Mr. Walner. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following individuals to the Facilities Master Plan Committee for a term to expire concurrent with their term on the select board. Catherine Manu Pelley. Catherine, sorry. Let's get, it's late.
That's okay. I've been called worse.
And that's my newborn's middle name, so I should probably, you know, not, you know.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Just, I think, madam chair, again, no disrespect, and I appreciate your willingness to step up because this is gonna be a lot of work, already has been, but will be a lot of work. But I think it dovetails rather nicely with Mr. Walner's efforts already, that he's committed hundreds of hours to. And I think there'll be a better coordination between all of them if Mr. Walner, if you will be willing to let Mr. Walner serve. But, you know, again, I respect your willingness to step up and take on the responsibilities. But I think Mr. Walner's effort already would dovetail nicely with serving on it.
Are you, did you want to submit Mr. Walner's name to, into, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary, did you want to submit Mr. Walner's name into nomination? Is that what you're?
I would, I would, I would prefer to do that, yeah. Thank you.
So open, open, so open the nominations.
Yeah, so again, if the student would just include Mrs. Manu Pelley and Mr. Walner, then we can take a roll call vote like we would normally take.
Sure. Okay, so, the, Mr. Studo, do you want to make, make a new motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint one of the following individuals to the Facility Master Plan Committee for a term to expire concurrent with their term on the select board. Either Richard Walner or Catherine Manu Pelley.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Okay, so this is a roll call name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Walner.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mrs. Manu Pelley.
Mr. Studo?
Mrs. Manu Pelley.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. O'Leary. All right. There is other appointments, which we don't have in our packet, so.
I do here. There, there's a bunch more. So I'm gonna be here for a while, just so everybody knows. I'm sorry, I didn't put this together, by the way.
What could it be with you?
Yeah, so just-
Hang in here.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Barbara Stats as the State Ethics Commission liaison for a term to expire in December 31st, 2021.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
By Mr. O'Leary. Waiting for the discussion. Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mrs. Stats.
Mr. Walner?
Mrs. Stats.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mrs. Stats?
Mr. Studo?
Mrs. Stats.
And Manu Pelley is Mrs. Stats.
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire in December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mrs. McKay.
Mr. Walner?
Mary Ann McKay.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mary Ann McKay.
Mr. Studo?
Mary Ann McKay.
And Manu Pelley is Mrs. McKay.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment as process-serving constables for terms to expire in December 31st, 2021. There are five openings, but there's three names being put for nomination. John Fiorello, Douglas Lab, and David Rosati.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. So three for reappointment, five positions, Mr. Studo?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Walner?
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Studo?
John Fiorello, Douglas Lab, David Rosati.
Okay, and Manu Pelley is Fiorello, Lab, and Rosati.
I have a question before the next motion. Is there a reason we're saying the names and not just saying yes or no? I'm sorry, I just don't know. Is that how it works? I just don't know.
It's a roll call name vote is typically-
Oh, I see, okay. I just didn't know. Everything else is, okay. Everything else is like yes or no.
If it's only one person, sometimes we, we say aye or yea, but it's nice to acknowledge. I think it's a nice to acknowledge them by name and stepping up to third.
Then the next one, I, I mean, you guys might need this one in front of you. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for appointment, reappointment as members of the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December 31st, 2023. Tomas Sanchez, Lauren Bishara, Michael Houli, Chris Le, Lebert, Sarish Rao, Erin Matt Daniels, David Doucette, James Shaney, Allison Papa Vasilio, Yan Huang.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if you recall, the last year or two, we've had a, had a big change in the Conservation Commission and several openings and lots of applicants, and it was a wonderful thing. And again, we still have people interested in participating on a regular basis. Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Bishara are both incumbents who were appointed last year to unexpired terms. Both have been regularly attending and serving, and serving well in the Conservation Commission and in consultation with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Laurie Mitchna. We are both recommending that Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Bishara be reappointed.
Mr. O'Leary, is it two openings?
Yes, the two, yeah.
Have the two terms expiring.
Two terms are expiring. There is still one associate membership opening, and I would anticipate that by our next meeting, I'll have a recommendation to fill that associate membership, membership slot.
Okay, great. So we've- Okay, and our liaison has made his, for Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Bishara. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Sanchez, Ms. Bishara.
Mr. Walner?
Mr. Sanchez, Ms. Bishara.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Bishara.
Mr. Studo?
I will take Mr. O'Leary's recommendation, and it's Mr. Sanchez and Mrs. Bishara.
Manu Pelley is Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Bishara.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Hillview Commission for terms to expire in December 31st, 2023. There are three openings. Charles, Charles Carucci incumbent, incumbent, William King incumbent, Francis Hachey incumbent, Daniella Claiborne, David Lee, Chris Lebert, Nicholas Masse, Henry Burke, Peter Jackson, Kristen Sullivan, Vincent Ragucci, Thomas-
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and liaison to the Hillview Commission. We have three openings, three incumbents seeking reappointment. That's Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, and Mr. Hachey. Again, Mr. King, I believe this is his second term. Mr. Carucci probably his third. Mr. Hachey, again, a long time member of the, one of the original members of the Hillview Commission, had hiatus, is now back on the commission. All of them extremely active, as you can be aware. This year has been a very challenging year in relation to the operations of the, of the Hillview, in not just the golf course, but also the, the facility itself. And they've been active members and consultation with Mr. Stack, who is the chair. We're recommending the reappointment of Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, and Mr. Hachey.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, Mr. Hachey.
Mr. Walner?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, and Mr. Hachey.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, and Mr. Hachey.
Mr. Studo?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. King, and Mr. Hachey.
And Manu Pelley is Carucci, King, and Hachey.
Thank you for the vote.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Historic District Commission for terms to expire on December 31st, 2023. There are four openings and four nominations. All incumbent, incumbents. Mark Hall, David Hamm, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's liaison?
I am.
Second by Mr. Walner. Motion by Mr. Studo. Mr. Walner, we're keeping you up. Mr. Walner.
We're all on the same page. I recommend them all.
Still need to hear, we still need to hear from you. Even though it's four for four, who do you recommend?
Mark Hall, David Hamm, Paul Chapman, and Thomas Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Walner?
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Parker.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Studo?
Mr. Parker, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Hall.
And Manu Pelley is Hall, Hamm, Chapman, and Parker.
Last one. All of this. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Youth Services Committee for the terms as noted. There are five openings and five applicants. Amy DeCara incumbent, Francis Ferraro incumbent, Deborah Mahoney, Jody Sponzio, Yan Huan.
Excuse me, Mr. Studo, I think you need to put the expiration dates for a couple of-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All, or Amy DeCara is December 31st, 2023, Francis Ferraro, December 31st, 2023, Deborah Mahoney, December 31st, 2023, Jody Sponzio, December 31st, 2023, and Yan Huan, December 31st, 2023, who is filling an unexpired term.
Yeah. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, there, there is a mistake in the name of, it should be Yan Hong, H-A-U-N-G.
Okay.
And also Deborah Mahoney is incumbent.
Okay.
Okay. So motion by Mr. Studo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Walner. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, yep, so, in speaking with Mr. Majane, Chair, we are recommending all five. The two, two new members who joined in a Zoom meeting and met everybody, and so we are recommending all five.
Is that committee full?
Yes, this, this fills it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Amy DeChara, Francis Ferraro, Deborah Mahoney, Jody Sponzio, Yan Huang.
Mr. Walner?
Amy DeCara, Francis Ferraro, Deborah Mahoney, Jody Sponzio, Yan Huang.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Amy DeChara, Francis Ferraro, Deborah Mahoney, Jody Sponzio, and Yan Huang.
Mr. Studo?
Ferraro, Francis Ferraro, Deborah Mahoney, Jody Sponzio, Yan Hong.
And Manu Pelley is DeShara, Ferraro, Mahoney, Sponzio, and Hong. Okay, next order of business. We're, for the moment, we'll, we'll be wrapping these up for next, next. Hopefully, everybody will finish connecting with their full different respective appointees, and we'll be finishing the rest of these up. Next order of business is to review our, from the Special Municipal Employee Designations. And we have an explanation in the packet, but Mr. Gilberto, if you wanted to give a summary for us, the same thing we did last year as well.
It is, so that this is-
It is, so this is effectively a rolling over of the previously authorized designations for special municipal employee positions. And these are largely part-time positions where we have at times struggled to identify candidates and where candidates have expressed interest who have other employment with the town that's part-time in nature, and they're maybe looking to supplement that. And so these positions are, they are advertised, and we'll go forward with filling them. And the Human Resources Director has done some initial outreach with the departments over the past couple of years and continue to be a need. And we are forecasting a need going into next year. So we are requesting that the board renew these designations for calendar year 2021.
Okay. Two. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to reconfirm the vote of December 16th, 2019, designating the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, for Parks and Recreation, Infant-Toddler Instructor, After-School Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Director, Summer Program Assistant Director, Summer Counselor. For Police, Matron, Crossing Guard, Counsel and Agent, Van Driver, Finance Committee, Recording Secretary, Police Department Co-Facilitators for the Youth Action Team, Library Substitute Library Technician. And the following position is voted on February 25th, 2019, for the Board of Health, Public Health Nurse.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
And Manu Pelley with a aye. Next order of business is to review the upcoming board meeting schedule. And Mr. Gilberto had suggested to us January 11th, January 25th, February 8th, February 22nd, as proposed meeting dates coming up. Do the members have the availability on those days?
You're filling out my social calendar, Chair.
And Mr. Gilberto, he was working around the holiday, he worked around the holiday in January. Amen. That's why, those are proposed. Does that work for everybody?
It is, too.
Any purposes yet? Okay. Not one January 11th? January 25th? February 8th?
Yep.
And February 22nd?
Yeah, that should be fine.
All right. Sounds like it works for everybody. So we'll schedule those in, Mr. Gilberto.
Great, thank you.
And we have a next order of business, which is the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I have to report is that we have read Reading Municipal Light Department, the 2021 calendars, which I know so many in the community look forward to. We do have a stash, if you will, here in Town Hall. And I encourage anybody who is interested in obtaining one to contact our office at 978-664-6010. We did work with Reading Light to try to make sure we've had a reasonable amount here in place. And we are actually mailing them out in response to any requests that we get. So to the board members, I'm not sure if you've got one at this point yet or not, but if you've not received one and are interested, please let us know. And the same goes for the community. They are first come, first served when they... I want to thank Karen for making sure that they get into everybody's hands. I believe we did a mailing to all the participants in the senior tax workshop program as well, just to make sure that they got one. A lot of those folks stopped by the Town Hall and were able to pick them up, so. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping it short, too. All right, and that is all the new business. Mr. O'Leary.
Just again, for all those people who are stepping forward and volunteering to serve on boards, committees, and commissions, thank them very much. And again, if you didn't, again, we all have so many slots to fill, but we'll try and find a spot for everybody. Anybody who was looking to step forward, we appreciate that. And other than that, just, everybody just wear a mask, be safe, be smart. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallner?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Nope, I'm good. Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Studo.
All set.
Well, I'm all set, too. We had a long night tonight, but we had a lot of, we had three public hearings, basically. We should probably, maybe try to plan one, one next time. One at a time. All right. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
A reluctant aye.
Mr. Wallner. He's already asleep, poor guy. Mrs. Gonzalez.
A big aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. Thank you, folks.